We are calling to order the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. And I would like to see if there are any changes to the agenda?
No.
No. Oh. Okay, 11I. So I would like to have a motion to approve with the amendment.
I'm of approval as amended.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. And Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. And Trustee Kuziak? Yes. Also says yes, so that's 4-0. That is approved. We are now going to recess to close session. I just want to say that we have too many people in the room right now. We're over fire code. We can only have 60 people in the room. So what we're going to ask is if the people from Vanoy Elementary and Stanton Elementary stay in the room, and anybody here who is not from those two schools, please step outside. After the schools present, we'll dismiss the schools, and then the other people who are here for other things can come back in. Okay? So if you're not from... Stay here if you're from Vanoy Elementary. Stay here if you're from Stanton Elementary. But any other people, we need to try to... Only have 60 people, and that's how many seats we have in here. All of the people. So sorry.
Thank you so much.
We want to make sure that... We appreciate you doing that.
Yeah.
And we will hear from you, of course. Yeah. We'll have you come back in. Okay. All right. All righty, we're going to get started now. If I could get it quiet, please? Okay, we're reconvening to open session. We have one report on action taken, and that is we move to approve the... The... To readmission of case 042324. So that is a student who is readmitted. And then we have a second item for closed session. The board took action to deny the request of unpaid leave for employee number 9791 by a vote of 4 to 0. Trustee Kuziak with the first motion, and Trustee Whitaker with the second motion. And now we are going to hear our mission statement from Trustee Howard. Oh. Oh, I'm so sorry. All right. Thank you very much, Amy. Okay, for the expulsion, we need to have a vote here in open session. So, Trustee Kuziak?
Yeah, I move approval for the readmission.
Okay, thank you. And Trustee Whitaker?
I'll second.
Okay. And...
That was the first and the second.
Oh, first and the second. Okay. All right. Fine. And then now we will have the vote by the board. So that is, Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
And... Trustee Raymond?
I abstain.
Abstain. And I will vote yes as well. So that will be 4-0-1. Okay? On the expulsion. A readmission of the expulsion for case 042324. Now, we will have the mission statement by Trustee Howard.
Sure. "We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents."
Thank you very much for that, Trustee Howard. We now have our public comment instructions by Trustee Whitaker.
Thank you, President Adams. "The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request-to-speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak, or be unmuted during your turn, and will be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from the speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented."
Okay, thank you, Trustee Whitaker. We are now going to have what many of you are here for. Our first school report will be from Vanoy Elementary School, and our presenter is Principal Villasenor.
All right. Are we good? All right. Good evening, esteemed members of the board, Superintendent Amati, cabinet members, and Castro Valley community. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the powerful and meaningful work happening at Vanoy Elementary. Our presentation tonight is entitled "Every Voice Counts: Celebrating Culture, Diversity, and Belonging at Vanoy," a theme that reflects our deep commitment to creating an inclusive environment where all students and families feel seen, heard, and valued. At Vanoy, we believe that a strong school community is built on understanding and honoring the diverse backgrounds and experiences of our students. This year, our staff, our students, and our families have come together through a variety of programs and events that uplift and celebrate the richness of our community. Some of the events that we will highlight today are our Friday Welcoming Committee, our Vibrant Multicultural Night, the work of our Vanoy Latino group, a special look at what our kindergarten classes look to do to celebrate their cultures, and finally, a little bit about our 4th grade Passport Projects. Each of these efforts reflects our belief that every voice matters, and that through listening, learning, and celebrating together, we build a stronger, more connected school community. We are so proud to share a little bit about what we're doing this year at Vanoy.
Hi, my name is Ari, and I'm proud to be one of Vanoy's courageous Cougars. Every Friday, my fellow courageous Cougars and I greet students and families as they arrive at school. We play music that changes each week, hold signs with positive messages, and cheerfully say good morning to everyone. We do this to help everyone start their day with a smile and to set the tone for a possum day. Personally, I really enjoy being part of this because it puts me and hopefully everyone else in a great mood. We even get to share our culture's music, like how I played a Portuguese playlist one morning. Am I right there with music? This is the winning... I don't know what we're playing that day, but that's the winning drawing of the yearbook. Kids really notice what we do. These are some pictures from... It's every Friday. Come on back.
Hello, I'm Lucas, and I am a 2nd grader in the DLI program at Vanoy.
I'm Janaviva, his mom. This year, we had the pleasure to participate in Vanoy's Multicultural Night.
This is a special evening where families come together to share their culture. There was food from all over the world, music, dancing, and art. My family set up a booth about Argentina, where my mom is from.
To teach others about Argentina, we brought lots of traditional items like a gaucho outfit, mate gord, and mate. But the main theme of our booth was showcasing Argentina's passion for soccer. We brought our jerseys for the national team, and also the jersey from our favorite local team, which Lucas is wearing today. Favorite place.
I also got to learn about other cultures from my schoolmates. It made me feel proud of where I come from and excited to learn about others.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, everyone. Good evening, my name is Laura, and I'm the Spanish translator at Vanoy. I would like to share a little about our Grupo Latino de Vanoy. This group brings together Spanish-speaking families and our school community. We meet monthly to learn about topics that help us better support our children to share resources and ideas, and to strengthen our connection to the school. Grupo Latino has become a space where families feel seen, heard, and valued. It's not only about supporting our students, it's also about building community and making Vanoy a better place for everyone. And these are some of the topics we cover this year.
Hola. Hi. I'm Darren, and I'm in kindergarten. In our class, we learned about each other's cultures. I taught my class all about Iran. In Iran, they speak Farsi and English. I enjoyed to teach my friends.
My mother is Magta, and my familia is de El Salvador. En El Salvador se comen pupusas y tamales. Que rico!
Magta shared with us that she shared with everybody about her home country, which is El Salvador, and they really enjoy some yummy food there, some pupusas and some tamales.
Good evening, I'm Jocelyn.
And I'm Alani. As part of our 4th grade California history curriculum, students are engaging in a project titled Passport to California that personalizes history by exploring immigration stories, specifically their own family's journey to California. This is a project designed to bring history to life by connecting the movement of people in the past with real-life stories of our students' families today. It supports both historical-cultural awareness by encouraging students to investigate why their families came to California, how they traveled, and what changes they experienced upon arrival. The project consists of two parts: a structured booklet that helps students organize and record their family's history, and an oral presentation where students share their findings with classmates, fostering communication skills and peer learning. This is a collaborative family project that strengthens homeschool connections and improves students' understanding of immigration as a central theme in California's history. I really enjoyed this project because I had the opportunity to teach my class about the country my family is from, El Salvador. I also really enjoyed it because I had the opportunity to learn about other countries around the world, and most importantly, I got to try some real yummy food. Listening to other classmates' heritage stories was an honor.
At Vanoy, we believe that every voice matters. We celebrate where we come from, and we honor where we're going together. By listening to each other, by learning from one another, by lifting up every culture and every story, we build a community where everybody belongs. Thank you so much for celebrating with us and hearing just a little bit of some of the activities that we have done this year. We have a tremendous community that supports us and supports our work, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that was so terrific. We are now going to hear have Student Board Member Fatima Said come up and present the recognition for the elementary school student, Anya Shaki. Shaki.
The governance team, along with Vanoy Elementary School, are proud to honor Anya Sheikh as an outstanding student. Anya is an exceptional student whose responsibility and dedication shine in everything she does. As a valued member of our Cougars Cougar leadership team, she leads by example and is a wonderful role model for her peers, who truly look up to her. Anya consistently produces high-quality work and approaches every task with care and determination. Her kindness, willingness to lend a helping hand, and readiness to go the extra mile make her a standout in our school community. The governance team, along with Vanoy Elementary School, are proud to honor Anya Sheikh.
Thank you so much for this word, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce anybody who's here with you, Anya?
My mom, my dad, and my grandma. Me today, they need to support me.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have recognition of the Vanoy Elementary School volunteer, Athena Nichols. By Trustee Raymond. That's okay. Yeah, let them take their pictures.
All right, Athena Nichols. My friend Athena Nichols, who I have known since her son Liam and my son Beckett were in kindergarten, and they're about to go off to high school, and I'm like... When I saw you on the list, I was like, my heart swelled with joy because this is totally deserved. And I know you're going to be completely like, "Peshaw, this is whatever, because it's just what I do," because it is just what you do. But I have a statement I'm going to read, but I didn't want to just jump into it without seeing just like how much I just appreciate your presence in general as a human being, and I know Vanoy is totally going to miss you. And it's amazing to me that the boys are all gone from Vanoy after this year. And I'll call them back there. So, okay. I'm like, holy cow, like I got to... I know. Well, we'll see you around, I'm sure. Okay. So Athena Nichols, the governance team, along with Vanoy Elementary School, are really proud to honor you as our outstanding volunteer. Athena has been an incredible asset to our school community through the years of dedicated volunteer service. From assisting teachers with classroom prep work to driving on field trips and serving as a library parent, she has consistently gone above and beyond to support our students and staff. She has played a key role in organizing memorable 5th grade events like commencement, and her leadership has been instrumental in coordinating school-wide favorites such as the book fair, Fall Festival, and Cougar Thon. No matter the task, she is always ready to lend a helping hand with a positive attitude and a generous spirit. Her commitment, kindness, and tireless efforts have helped make our school a more vibrant and connected place for everyone. She truly embodies the Cougars' spirit and is the heart and soul of our Vanoy community. It's the spirit in parents like Athena that make our school extra special. Our teachers, staff, and families feel lucky to have gotten the opportunity to work with her over the years. We are so grateful for her contributions and are thrilled to recognize her with this well-deserved award. The governance team, along with Vanoy Elementary School, are proud to honor Athena Nichols. Nothing really, but we're so happy to have been a Vanoy family for all these years, and we're going to miss you all. And we'll be back, I'm sure. Our boys are off to the high school in Creekside, so we'll be around there now. Thank you.
Okay. So now some board member comments regarding Vanoy, starting with Student Board Member Said.
Thank you for the presentation. It was really a nice hearing about all the cultures and how involved the students are in the culture, and that's really important for something that all students should be involved in. And congratulations. Congratulations to both Anya and for Athena. Thank you.
So... Trustee Kuziak.
Hola, la escuela de Vanoy. A mi ma gusta papu... papuza también. Y dolce de leche. Si. Pero, I don't speak very good Spanish. Entonces, I just wanted to say, Director Villasenor, thank you so much, and I hope you've enjoyed your first year with us here as part of the Castro Valley community, and it's just wonderful to see how Vanoy has transformed, being our dual-lingo program. It's such an amazing program, and I want to... Whenever we make a shout-out to this program, I always look over to Gary Howard and am grateful for his advocacy to make it happen. And I just want to thank both our Student of the Year, as well as our Parent Volunteer of the Year. You all are the heart of our communities. You make it happen. So thank you very much. And may you have a sweet summer like the dolce de leche that I so much enjoy. And thank you for being here. Go Cougars!
Okay. Trustee Whitaker?
Yes, so Principal Villasenor, I want to say there are a couple statements that you said that I really appreciate, and I'm sure everybody feels them at your school, it looks like it from the folks that are here, is you stated that your goal is to have all families feel seen and heard, and you uplift and celebrate the richness of our community. That is such a welcoming thing to do, and with all the activities you have, you can tell that you really... And your staff, can I see a raise of hands of the staff? Hi! That you've done to make Vanoy a great place to be. And then I think the Vanoy Cougars who spoke, could you all stand up and get another round of applause? You all came and spoke so passionately about what you're experiencing, and I want to come eat your food. And then to Anya and Athena, thank you so much for what you do to our community, and I know that Creekside and the high school are looking forward to new parents coming on board, so can't wait to see what you do there. Thank you all so much.
Trustee Howard?
Yeah, thanks for a very nice report. It's great to see all of you here. You know, Castro Valley's demographics have changed radically over the last 10 years, and we see it right here, and it's terrific. So you're doing a lot of great things there that we really... They're really wonderful. But the one that really... That I really liked was the emphasis on family history, because I think it's really important to remember, we all came from somewhere. And in fact, we all came from many places, most of us. And so I think it's great to remember that and learn about it and celebrate it, and have a great time with the food and all the other things that go with that. So thanks very much for coming to visit us tonight, and congratulations to Anya and Athena. Thanks to you all.
Trustee Raymond?
It's no secret that I am also a Vanoy Cougar, and Vanoy will always be in my heart, and it was so nice to see like familiar faces and teachers and staff who we haven't seen in so many years, but I mean, who still make a difference, you know, to my kids and my family. The 4th grade Passport Project is one that my kids learn a lot about themselves when doing. So I'm glad to hear it's still going, you know, and going strong. Laura, it's so good to see that you're part of the Vanoy community. Laura and I met when our kids were at CVE and TK, so we hit way back. 17 years, almost. Not that long, but it feels like that. But it's just... It's just really great to see everybody here, though, and some of my neighbors, and our kids who are getting so big, and it's just very wonderful to see everybody here. And thank you for coming tonight.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to say, I don't want to repeat everything we've heard, because it's absolutely beautiful what you did. I wanted to say that the Passport Project also, that to me is what Ethnic Studies is about, which we've been fighting to make sure that we actually develop curriculum for, and that's elementary school. It's where you get to learn not just about yourself, but also about others, and the diaspora, right? Their experiences and their contributions. What a beautiful, beautiful thing. So now when people say, "When are you teaching Ethnic Studies?", I can say, "Even in elementary school, we are doing that." So that's beautiful. By the way, those jerseys from Argentina, I'd like to have one for my husband. I saw that, and I'm like, I know what that is, so that's amazing. But great presentation, the students are amazing, the staff is Vanoy, the principal. It's just a beautiful, beautiful place, where I feel like you said it, Vanoy, where everyone belongs, every voice is counted, and all are valued. So thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. You rocked.
So just a couple comments. I just wanted to say you're celebrating culture, diversity, and the one that I hung on the most to was belonging, because I know even when, you know, as a high school teacher, when a student feels like they belong, they excel. They want to be at school because they belong there, and they feel that way. Your Friday welcoming activity looks like lots of fun. I think I'll try to catch one of those. I don't know if we'll get there this year, but next school year, I'm going to try to make sure I go to one of those. And the Grupo Latino with Padres Latinos' Parents, I think that's really very nice to give that extra belonging and support to the parents as well as the kids. Right, our Housing of DLI is of Vanoy. And that is a flagship program that we have here in Castro Valley that we are very proud of. And California History, it sounds so much more interesting than what my kids did, building those missions and gluing them together. And I was doing a lot of the project and all of that. Yeah, I'm glad to see that California History has made some good strides upward. Yeah. So Principal Villasenor, if you would like to introduce maybe your staff that is here? Yeah.
Yes, of course. We have some staff here. Let's see. Mr. Luce is right there, our kindergarten teacher. Yes, sporting the Hawaiian shirt over there. We have Ms. Galván, our 5th grade teacher. Ms. Gutierrez, our 4th grade teacher. We have, I saw Ms. Nessa. Ms. Nessa's over here. Our TK teacher. She's amazing. Ms. Hamilton is part of our staff. She's also our outgoing VPC president. She's done amazing things in the years that she's been supporting. But we're not letting her go, so don't even think about it. But she, she is part of putting all these events together and supporting us in that way. Laura, who is our parent translator. She's a little bit of everything. I mean, her official title is translator, but she helps in everything. Everything we need, she's there to support the teachers, the staff, the kids. And we're so thankful. Ms. Wendy's back there hiding. She's our school counselor, who happens to have her kiddos too, also at Vanoy. So we're excited about that. Did I miss anybody? She, oh, that's right. Ms. Jango was here and Ms. Apadicio, both of them retiring this year. But they wanted to come for a little bit, cheers on and be supportive. So we're happy for them. But yeah, we have an amazing staff. I know more wanted to come to share the support, but we're thankful for the ones that were able to make it.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Superintendent Mari has a comment.
I, I wanted to say, although after the presentation, we're gonna, you know, we want to leave. But a part of my presentation, my report, actually, I wanted to show a little bit of the dance, the beautiful celebration you had. So I just want to tell you what a beautiful event that was and how much we all enjoyed it. The kids, the performances, all of the, what you did to celebrate DLI. It was absolutely beautiful. So thank you.
All right. So now we have Stanton Elementary School. And if Principal Crote, otherwise known as Principal Brea, would come up, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say good evening first to the Board of Education and Executive Cabinet. We're excited to share tonight how Stanton Elementary has embraced restorative practices to build a positive, trusting school community. Through intentional strategies, we foster empathy, connection, and belonging, all of which help strengthen relationships among students, staff, and families. So you might ask, why restorative practices? At the heart of our work is a commitment to fostering a positive school climate, where students feel seen, heard, and supported every single day. The approach leads, this approach leads to a better attendance overall, reduced conflict, and deeper student engagement. It's not punitive measures. It's about creating a culture of trust and emotional safety. Sorry. Our approach is built around the five Rs. So if you take a look here at our slide, the following are responses to student behaviors. They are printed on our Fix-It tickets and provide staff with a menu of options to choose from when they're involved in student interactions on campus. So for example, restorative practice through dialogue, restorative conversations between peers, and sometimes even between adults and students as well. We recommend a meeting. That means to address issues, right? A chance to talk it through, to unpack the situation and have in-person team meetings to help our students. A reteach opportunity. Sure, behavior is learned, but so is repair. So we can always learn how to make better choices and how to fix things when we make a mistake. Resources provided. We support our students with what they need. Perhaps a fidget or a break card to help with self-regulation. Reconsidering a privilege as we work together to restore trust and understanding. Not as a punishment, but as a step towards restoring trust and healing. This structure allows students to reflect, take responsibility, and rebuild relationships, all while staying connected to the school. I'm now going to introduce Ms. Jones and Samantha to talk about soft starts.
Good evening. I'm Katie Jones, 5th grade teacher at Stanton. I'm from. Each day in Room 1 begins with a soft start. Just like we adults often need time in the morning to have our coffee, check our email, get everything ready for the day. The students also need that same thing. So our soft starts in Room 1 means that students can play board games, build with Lego, draw, read, or just chat with their classmates for a gentle transition into the day. Snacks are also readily available for students to ensure they are fueled for the day ahead. Since implementing soft starts last school year, I've seen a reduction in student stress, improved classroom community and relationships, and even a decrease in tardies and absences. Students appreciate the chance to settle in and prepare themselves for the day and will promptly clean up and get ready for learning when soft starts are over. It's a simple strategy with a large impact. I have one of my fabulous 5th graders here, Samantha, who's gonna share her experience with soft starts.
I think it's a, it's a good start to the day because it gives you a chance to settle in and chat or play with your friends. You can also get the opportunity to interact with classmates that you don't usually get to hang out. For me, it's, it helps me get ready to learn at the start of the day.
And next I'm going to introduce Mrs. Medina to talk about Community Circle.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Medina. I'm the 4th grade teacher at Stanton. Before I introduce Community Circles, I want to acknowledge the indigenous practice from the Anishinaq, Nakbec tribe. They use these circles for community members to repair harm and to come together as a community. And I also want to acknowledge that we are gathered on ancestral homelands of the Loney people. And I feel honored to present to you today. So Community Circles are another key practice. Students gather regularly to share experiences, celebrate each other, and strengthen classroom bonds. Circles build trust and create safe spaces for open dialogue, supporting social, emotional growth and accountability. In my classroom, we have a Community Circle every Friday. And in this circle, I incorporate my social, emotional learning lessons, birthday shout-outs, and have my Unique of the Week present their All About Me poster. We also play fun games like telephone spinner and more to enhance and build our classroom environment. And so creating our Community Circle is such a great way to connect to this indigenous practice. And I'm honored to do that in my classroom in Room 2. And now I'm going to introduce you to Ms. Buffington.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna talk to you about restorative conversations. So when conflicts happen, we turn to restorative conversations. These guided dialogues help students reflect on their actions and also understand different perspectives and take responsibility. It's about repairing relationship and moving forward with greater empathy. We use four key points when we have these restorative conversations. The first is perspective. Once students can learn that people can experience the same thing at the same time in a different way, it deepens their empathy. Allowing time is the second key point. We allow time for students to have individual conversations, as well as to regulate their emotions, as well as to have the actual restorative conversation with the parties. Apologies and accountability. All parties involved take accountability for their part in the situation. Apologies need to be meaningful. So we need to be able to allow students to express when they're ready to accept an apology and give an authentic apology, especially when a student's been hurt. And lastly, plan to move forward. We often discuss the same thing, if the same thing were to happen tomorrow, how would they handle the situation, knowing what they know now? Would they make the same choice? How would they make it different the next time? And now I'm gonna introduce Ms. Crote to talk about the data.
If you take a look here at the data, you could see that we have three questions. This was taken from the Kelvin Survey this March, which our 5th grade students participated in. And you can see that it's showing a positive impact that these practices really do have on our school climate. We've also seen improvements, like has been mentioned before, in attendance, behavior, and student engagement, all pointing towards a stronger and more connected school community. We still have work to do, but we're off to a great start. I'd like to thank you very much for your time tonight, for letting us show and share how Stanton Stars shine. Our commitment to restorative practices reflects our dedication to building a school where every student feels valued and empowered. And now what I'd like to do is, in closing, invite my Stanton Stars and members of the Kindness Squad who are here tonight to join me. So Stanton Stars and Kindness Squad members, would you please stand and face the Board of Education? Our Kindness Squad is a group of students who are selected by their peers. These students help to lead our school-wide assemblies, encourage kindness by leading by example, and also recognizing other students that they notice, cultivating kindness in their daily tasks at Stanton. Now, please join us, Stanton Stars, in our cheer when I count to three. You guys ready? Okay, let's go. One, two, three. We are Stanton Stars. We are Stanton Stars. S, safety first. T, take responsibility. A, achieve your goals. R, respect yourself and others. We are Stanton Stars. We are Stanton Stars. Go Stars!
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. That was so wonderful. Alrighty, now we're gonna have Student Board Member Said come up and do recognition of two Stanton Elementary School students, Samantha and Savvy Reen. Come on up, Samantha and Savvy.
The Governance Team, in partnership with Stanton Elementary School, is proud to honor Samantha and Savvy Reen, outstanding twin students. Samantha Reen is a compassionate leader who consistently demonstrates initiative, empathy, and integrity. Always the first to volunteer, Samantha is deeply involved in school life, serving as an active member of recess and wellness warriors, student council, and various campus clubs. A former member of the Kindness Squad, she lives out those values daily, offering friendship and support to everyone around her. Samantha is attentive and thoughtful, frequently checking in on others and asking follow-up questions to show genuine care. She gives her best effort and takes responsibility for her learning. Savvy Reen is dedicated and courageous student whose perseverance and positivity are truly inspiring. As a proud leader in the Neurodiversity Club, Savvy helps raise awareness and inclusion during Neurodiversity Week. She approaches every challenge with a growth mindset, always giving her best even when faced with obstacles. Savvy is also a powerful self-advocate, raising awareness about celiac disease and educating peers about how it affects her life. Her courage, compassion, and leadership are a source of strength and inspiration to others. Samantha and Savvy exemplify the core values of the Castro Valley Unified School Districts. They are shining examples of what it means to be student leaders at Stanton Elementary. The Governance Team, along with Stanton Elementary School, are proud to honor Samantha and Savvy Reen.
Thank you so much. Would you like to tell us who you're here with, your family?
We are here with our mom, dad, brother, grandma, and grandpa.
And of course, you're welcome to take pictures if you like, family. Okay, it seems, well, we got one more. Okay, next we're gonna have Trustee Whitaker recognize Stanton Elementary School volunteer Christina Amato.
The Governance Team, along with Stanton Elementary, are proud to honor Christina Amato as our outstanding volunteer. Ms. Christina Amato has been named Stanton Elementary School's Volunteer of the Year in recognition of her incredible dedication and unwavering support of the school community. Christina has consistently volunteered for decades, beginning with her eldest daughter. Attended in the early 2000s, she plays a vital role in both the AM and PM TK classrooms, despite not having a child currently enrolled, and devotes countless hours to the coffee program, ensuring teachers can focus on student learning rather than paperwork. Christina's generosity extends beyond her time. She frequently donates supplies and is always seeking ways to ease teachers' workload and make staff feel seen, supported, and appreciated. Her kindness, reliability, and open, easygoing nature have made her a beloved and indispensable part of the Stanton community. Christina's impact reaches every corner of Stanton Elementary. Whether she's prepping materials at home, working one-on-one or in small groups with students, or baking delicious muffins for the staff. Christina approaches every task with a gentle, caring spirit. She is consistently willing to help with anything needed, always ready to jump in with positivity and flexibility. From organizing donations to providing extra support for a student he needs a little more time, Christina's steady presence has helped create a nurturing environment for students and teachers alike. Stanton Elementary is honored to recognize Christina Amato for her decades of tireless volunteerism, compassion, and steadfast commitment to the success and well-being of the entire school community. The Governance Team, along with Stanton Elementary School, are proud to honor Christina Amato. Christina, before you go, is there anyone here with you tonight?
My baby girl.
Or do you want to, wait, what?
My baby girl is in the middle there, next to Mrs. Buffington.
Right there. And if you all would like to take pictures with your mom and daughter.
You could come up, take a picture. Yay. Michael. Principal Crote, if you would like to introduce your staff that's here?
Short thing, could you please stand if you're part of Stanton Staff? Because we have a lot of folks here tonight. We have Ms. Medina, Ms. Jones, Ms. Franco, Ms. Buffington, Ms. Koo, Ms. Morgan, Mr. Domingo, Ms. Brady, Ms. Johnson, our spot president, Ms. Vanessa, Ms. Savannah Sun, Ms. Grippy, Ms. C, Ms. Kelly. Am I missing anyone? I think I got everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so now we'll have Board Member comments, starting with Students Board Member Said.
Okay. Thank you to the Stanton Stars for an amazing presentation. We love restorative justice. Restorative justice is good stuff, according to Mr. Kuziak. So that's good. Thank you for the presentation. It was really nice to hear about the great community that you guys have. And congratulations to both Samantha and Savvy Reen and to Christina as well. Thank you.
Before I say anything, I just want to note how highly unusual it is to have a doubleheader here of two schools. And so I want to congratulate both of you, both our schools being here tonight. And it's a reminder as a board member why we're here. We're here for kids. Also, we have an adult school too. We're here for them too. But our purpose is centered on you. And this is a fantastic reminder for the adults who get to spend many hours in meetings to be reminded why we're here. And it makes me happy. It brings me joy. And I just want to thank our Stanton Stars. Fantastic to see what you're doing with restorative justice, which I was reflecting about. I don't remember much when I was five years old in elementary school, but I'm pretty sure we didn't talk about restorative justice. And it's really cool to think that you're getting tools to figure out how to resolve conflicts, how to talk to people who might not be your friends who might become your friends. So I really love the intentionality of what's happening and how we're guiding our kids there. So thanks for doing that. I want to acknowledge Christina. Thank you for your support as a volunteer in our schools. That's how we get things done. And then to Samantha and Savvy, thank you as well. As you go to middle school, I hope that you will continue to shine like stars as you move forward. And you know, last year it really caught my attention when we talked about neurodiversity. And I think particularly post-pandemic, it's something where I think we've heard more voice about that. And it's really empowering to hear children talk about that because we are all different. And to create space for all of our, for all kids is really important. And I just want to acknowledge my favorite first teacher for my kid, Teddy, is here. Her name is Principal Crote. Wow, guess what we're doing? We're, I'm going to take my 16-year-old son to look at colleges this summer. He was in her TK class at CVE. So you always have a special place in my heart and our public school journey. And it's wonderful. It's interesting tonight, we're about to name, where the board will consider naming a new superintendent later on. And I remember Jim Negri pulling me aside, telling me how fortunate we were that he was one of our previous superintendent to have you as our first teacher for our transitional kindergarten. And so it's wonderful to see our community and to see how we're all connected and just all the things that all the kids are doing. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Trustee Whitaker?
I won't repeat everything, but what I really appreciate is healthy conversations, really giving people tools. And I will say, the community circles were the one that I really resonated with. Like giving a space for people to have a community conversation is so healthy. And it just, thank you for doing that and thank you for bringing that to the space. It just, I mean, I'm sure you have tons of stories of learning, of what worked well and what we all learn from and how we work through stuff together. And it's really about how we work through stuff together because we aren't going to agree on everything. We're different people. We have different lenses. And isn't that a beautiful thing, that we have different perspectives to share with one another? So thank you so much for that. And I would remiss if I didn't say, whoa Stanton Stars. Good job on your cheer. How many of you want to do this professionally when you grow up? I just want to know. Because you've got some good moves, you know, you could keep on with that. Because there's lots of fun dance programs that we have. And choir, tons of cool choir programs. And then Samantha and Savvy, my late husband was a twin. And it can be such an amazing experience to have someone that you're so close to, yet you want to be an individual yourself too. And what I see with you two, you're a dynamic but unique individuals duo, right? And that, it just shines through you both, how much you are unique in your own space and you contribute. But I can see that bond between you two, and that's awesome. So just wanted to say, congrats to you two again. And then again to Christina, wow. Like, thank you for your decades of support in our schools. We're just honored to have you as part of our community. Thank you.
Trustee Howard?
Yeah, thanks for a very nice report. And you know, the thing that struck me about it was that, given the world, this is a little bit like what you two said. Given the world we live in right now, I think that it would be good for all of us to attend your classes up there and to think about restorative practices and apologies and trying to get along with people. And I also really like the idea of a soft start. I mean, that's just such a really nice idea to get, not just for you guys, but your guys are benefiting from it now. But I think we all ought to think about that. So thanks for the lesson tonight. I appreciate all of it. And it was also, I enjoyed the Stanton Stars. Thank you. And congratulations to Samantha, Savvy, and Christina. And good luck to all of you. Thanks.
Trustee Lehman?
I also don't want to do a lot of repeating, but I did want to point out that there were several children sitting on the floor with pom poms for over an hour, waiting to use them. And I got to say, it was great. So thank you so much for both your patience, you guys. We're clearly very excited to bring your spirit here to us tonight. And I've got to say, I think you did the Stanton Community proud for many reasons. I also just, again, I don't want to repeat a bunch, but it sounds like you and your staff are doing an incredible job of giving our kids tools that hopefully are helping them build better habits with communication and respect for people and understanding of differences, you know, around them, whether it be philosophical differences or physical differences. You know, I think that one of the nice things about living in a tumultuous time is that if we, if we allow ourselves to recognize it as an opportunity for teaching our kids to do better in the future, and hopefully as adults, most of us can go along with them as well. I think it's a real opportunity for growth, you know, for all of us. And I think that applies not just to education, but to really everything. So thank you guys for being here and for sharing all of that. And I just want to say that I felt honored to receive your words here tonight. So thank you.
Superintendent Amato?
Yeah, not repeating anything, but I do want to say thank you so much for the land acknowledgement. And I want to have you pay, as you walk out, you will see we actually have a land acknowledgement that we just about a couple of months ago posted right there because it is important to recognize this ancestral land. I love everything you're doing and I love the way you are looking at restorative practices because a lot of times people might say restorative practices, but the description exactly of what needs to happen is so, so important. I also want to thank the twins. We've never had two being recognized. But when your principal said, we've got twins, and I read about you, we are so happy that this was possible. So thank you. Both of you are amazing and unique. And then Christina, thank you so much for all that you have done. And it's just beautiful to see all of you, families, students from both schools and staff here. Thank you for what you do each and every day as teachers and staff at the school to recognize kids, to make sure they have a self-landing and that they're nurtured. So beautiful job. Thank you, Principal Gina, who's just phenomenal, and Soraya. We are very lucky to have, to work with such incredible people here.
It's almost impossible not to repeat what some people said. But I just wanted to say that soft start, it sounds like something very interesting to me. I know in my own classroom, I would start off with independent study. I wouldn't start off launching in at 8:30 into algebra or English literature, right? It wasn't the right thing to do. So I understand that soft, that soft start, that makes sense. Community circles, I remember doing restorative circles. But I remember in order for a restorative circle to work, you first had to have some before anything had happened, which would make it a community circle. So those are very good, very helpful. And it gets people to open up and be able to talk later on if there is some kind of conflict. So wonderful on that. Samantha and Savvy, I love that you're doing so well. And you know, you have, you know, that one of you with the neurodivergent abilities. And it's so wonderful that you can be a person that is a pillar of your community. Keep that up. That's really a great thing. And thank you, Ms. Amato. Jeez, no kids in school and still volunteering. You are a saint. And thank you very much, Stanton. And thank you very much, Vanoi. We're going to now take a five-minute break. Board Member Report?
Oh, yep, no?
Okay. Hello, everyone. Hello. This is my last board report, actually. So it's a little sad. But I wish I had more to say, but I lowkey don't. But so it is the end of the year. So there's like, what, a week and a half as of today? Seven, six days, six days of school. A lot of schools A lot of schools are prepping for their graduations, such as the high school, which is next Friday, and I would love it if everybody comes. It's going to be long, but amazing. And then, I would also like to introduce to you guys the new student board member for next year. So, let me go up further. Yay! Okay, this is Scarlett Everson. Okay, I'm really happy to introduce you guys, Scarlett Everson, who will be stepping into the role. She brings great energy, fresh ideas, and the kind of passion that this team deserves. I have no doubt Scarlett will do an amazing, an awesome and amazing job and put a smile on your face the same way she does for me. So, thank you all again for everything, and it's been a real pleasure to work with you guys. And good luck to Scarlett Everson.
Welcome, Scarlett.
Aww. Flower. That's awesome. So, actually, before, go ahead if you want to make comments because I do want to say something about our wonderful, we have a little thing for-
Well, I just want to say, Scarlett, you brought some folks with you. Can we know who's joining you tonight? Oh, can you go to the mic and introduce them, please? A proud family.
Okay, I have my grandma, my little brother Finn, he's also a student at the high school, and my dad, my grandpa, my mom, my friend Indy, she used to be on the board a couple of years ago. And then also Mr. Maloney's right there, he's our leadership director. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we're, yes?
I just want to congratulate Fatima, one for graduating. I can't believe it. And it's really been a privilege to have you here. It's so important that our students know that their voice can matter, and this is a great learning opportunity for them. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to be here with us. And I do want to assert a point of privilege. I would like to have all three of our board reps come on up. I need a picture of them.
Pretty cool.
Because it's like a lifelong family you have, you know? So, let's, if I can get a picture of you guys, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, of course. And they're, what about?
It's past, present, and future. Yes. Yeah. Yes, trustee Whitaker.
I was going to hand it over to superintendent.
So, I just want to, again, thank Fatima for doing such a beautiful, beautiful job. And it's so wonderful to have past, present, and future together. That's pretty special. And so, Indiana and Fatima have also been a part of the DSLA District Student Leadership Alliance. And guess what, Fatima? I could actually write your name in a way that only you and I can read in Arabic. So, we just wanted to thank you on behalf of the team here for being our student board member, a wonderful voice, and always so poised and great. So, I'm going to come in. Your car.
Any other board comments? I just want to say thank you very much for being a terrific board member, and we've really enjoyed having you here. Thank you so much.
That's awesome.
Okay, we now have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. All right. So, the first thing I wanted to just share with you is our employees of the year and retirement celebration that we had last week already. And I just wanted to acknowledge Dr. Zamora, Dr. Gachiru, and their team in human resources for doing such a great job. The entire cafeteria at the high school was packed with folks just acknowledging all those who were receiving an award as well as those who were retiring. So, it was absolutely a beautiful celebration, and our mariachi performed at the beginning, which was really, really great. So, thank you. I know this has really changed. We used to have two different events. It was very quiet. It's been very different every year, getting better and better and better. So, thank you. That was a lot of work, but definitely worth every second. And then we went to the DLI celebration, the dual-language immersion celebration, and it was fabulous. There were so many people. You can see, it was absolutely packed. And the kids were just so cute. So, we have a little video that, Amy, I took the video for you to just see a glimpse of what happened. So, that was just the glimpse of the, it was so, so great. The kids were amazing, and the kindergarteners got their first biliteracy award so that they can carry it all the way to 12th grade. So, a certificate of biliteracy. And then on Monday, we had, we have our leadership meeting here in this room most of the time, learning together, reading, having conversations. But this last Monday, we decided to have our meeting at Lake Chabot, and it was a fabulous time. We had together, really, the goal was to be together to talk about a few things. But also, we wanted to do a walk. We actually never made it that far, but we know where it is. But I wanted to take everybody to that walk, the historical walk at Lake Chabot on, I believe it actually starts in San Leandro, where you can see how the dam was built and the history that really all of us need to know about the Chinese immigrant who built the dam and all of the things that happened and their labor. So, it's a beautiful historical walk. But I want to say we have an amazing leadership team. All of our administrators were there. So, it was great. Some of us walked a little further than the rest of us. Just kidding. It was great. Some of us didn't walk at all. But it was great to be together. I wanted to share with you just a wonderful resource that Van Jones and Marion Meadows have put together. Van has worked on this for a long, long time. It's our LGBTQ plus thrive guide that is absolutely phenomenal. It's already on our website, but I'm going to ask him to come and talk a little bit about what is included at our next board meeting because we, he wasn't able to join us today. But this guide has now been shared around the state with all different districts in California because everyone has been looking and asking. And I think it's a really great thing that Casta Valley team has put together. And one of our former students, who is now in law school, has put together. So, just wanted to acknowledge him and let you know that we will go over a little bit of this next time. So, and that is my report. Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you for your encouragement about activity. When we were at CSBA, was it two years ago in San Francisco? I don't know if the public appreciates this, but this district really, it leads in the state of California when it comes to supporting our LGBTQ plus students. And we have other districts coming to us, asking us for support. And as much as I think in some ways we shouldn't put on students to have to advocate for themselves, it's really empowering to see that Van has stepped up as a former student now to create this resource. And I saw an early draft of it and was just so, so pleased to see that advocacy is turning into something. So, thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. We are now at 7A appointment of superintendent approval of employment contract. I have a statement I would like to read before we start this. Good evening. On behalf of the Casta Valley Unified School District Board of Education, I'd like to take a moment to share the process that led to tonight's recommendation for the appointment of our next superintendent. As part of our commitment to transparent and inclusive leadership, the board initiated a comprehensive search process to identify the best candidate to lead our district. At a special board meeting held on March 23, 2025, the board selected the professional search firm Leadership Associates to support this effort. Leadership Associates facilitated 23 community input sessions and collected 672 survey responses from the Casta Valley community. This strong level of engagement provided the board with meaningful insight into the community's priorities, perspectives, and concerns. The comprehensive feedback was shared with the board and played a critical role in informing decision-making throughout the search process. Our educational partners identified the following top 10 professional qualities and characteristics as priorities for the next superintendent. First, equity-driven leadership. Second, community engagement and collaboration. Third, inspirational and visionary leadership. Fourth, conflict resolution and diplomacy. Fifth, fiscal responsibility. Sixth, commitment to educational excellence and equity. Seventh, cultural competency and empathy. Eighth, strong communication and listening skills. Ninth, innovative and collaborative problem-solving. And tenth of the last one, integrity and accountability. Throughout this process, the board remained focused on identifying a leader who not only brings exceptional experience and qualifications, but who also embodies our district's core values and long-term vision for equity, academic excellence, and student-centered decision-making. Guided by these priorities, the recruitment effort attracted a diverse and highly-accomplished pool of 29 applicants, including seven with prior experience as superintendents or superintendent-principals, 15 assistant superintendents, four district office administrators, one in another administrative role, and two from other professional backgrounds. On May 2, in closed session, the board reviewed all the applications in collaboration with Leadership Associates and selected four candidates to move forward to interviews, which were held on May 12, 2025. These interviews featured rigorous questions aligned with district priorities, including equity, instructional leadership, community engagement, and organizational management. After thoughtful deliberation, we are proud to bring forward the recommendation to appoint Nia Rosichi as our next superintendent of Casta Valley School District, effective July 1, 2025. Dr. Rosichi is a highly respected educational leader with over 30 years of experience, including the past seven years serving our district as assistant superintendent and director of educational services. Her deep understanding of CBUSD, her unwavering commitment to equity, and her visionary leadership make her uniquely suited to lead our district into the future. We thank all of the candidates who participated in this process and express our sincere appreciation to the staff, community members, and consultants who supported this important work. Tonight, we look forward to discussing and voting on Dr. Rosichi's employment agreement and officially welcoming her into this new role.
I would be honored to make a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Nia Rosichi as our next superintendent for Casta Valley Unified School District.
I will second.
Okay. So, starting then with trustee, oh, we have discussion. I'm so sorry. Discussion time, and we need our questions, right? Questions first? No questions? Then we'll do these? Yeah. Okay. I'd like to, we have two people who would like to comment on this. You will have three minutes. First is Frank Mellon.
I've lived here in Casta Valley over 40 years. All three of my children have gone through the school system. I used to be proud the way this school district worked. One of the letters that was written by the president of the school board was, "There will be transparency in this selection process." Transparency. But the letter also said, "And we'll tell you when that transparency will happen." Poke in the eye to everybody. We are facing a selection here, and ma'am, I don't know you from Adam. That's all right. Because what I'm concerned about is how this board went in a railroad fashion. And the dates, when you look at what your own documentation shows, makes this look like the fix was in regardless of how many people were interviewed or looked at. You know, we've also got other issues. You've got the people that are here over at the Marshall School. But you also have the 50% rule. I sincerely hope you're not going to do that because the school district that my three children went through, went through real grades, and they went through real attendance, and they weren't shuffled through. Because the 50% rule makes us no better than school districts on either end of us. So, I suggest to you, you've got a hard role, but you also, as members of the school board, you have failed. You get an F for transparency. You get an F for collaboration. And frankly, as far as I'm concerned, you have an F for being community.
Okay, we will now hear from Brian Foster. Three minutes.
Want a clarification? Is this the public comments time as well?
This is not public, this is on, you said that you wanted to talk during 7B?
I also had public comments, and you told us all to leave, and you called it a comment.
That's later.
This, this, on 10.
That's what I need to know.
Okay, we're on 7B now.
Okay, all right. So, Mike, thank you, executive staff and president of the board, members of the board. I'm really going to talk to the board today directly. And I've known some of you for a long time, some of you for years, and I've supported what you've done. I've respected what you've done. I respect anyone who runs for office and achieves office, even people I disagree with violently. So, just know that. But something is happening here. Something is afoot. And I hope that the community is giving you pause. Like, why is all this happening right now? What is it that's causing them to rise up on a number of different separate issues that yet seem to be connected in some way? Are you thinking that it's this weird organized opposition, a conspiracy theory? Or maybe it's people who- it's people who really care and are trying to make a difference, or trying to get you guys to pay attention to their concerns? I don't know. And of course, you don't owe me a response, but I'm just asking you, look in your hearts to do so. And I have to hand it to your new superintendent. I mean, certainly if you had offered me $100,000 raise, I would have accepted it too, you know. But, but I wanted to throw in the context. By the way, I've never had one. In fact, it took me 13 years as a teacher before I could touch the $100,000 salary level as my base. Yet that's just the increment that you're giving away, seemingly without any discussion, or without any consideration. I've never been offered a job where they said, you want $100,000 raise. I doubt anybody else has either, except here. Right? So, think about that for a minute. In fact, none of your teachers who don't have either a master's or a bachelor's degree will ever see $100,000 in their salary based on your January schedule. None of them. If they have an advanced degree, it might take them seven, eight, 10 years, depending on their exact number of credits, before they had $100,000. And again, that's the increment, not the base of $380,000. Look at the equity. You know, this is a big, beautiful contract. Where the wealthiest of the wealthy are getting more wealthy, and those who are left behind are forgotten. Do you need supplies in your classrooms? We don't care. We're giving $100,000 chunks to the top position. I really, really don't get it. The whole transparency issue with taking place with the two teachers, I don't get. You wouldn't even counter the item in closed session. Why not? I just don't get it. You well know about my, my opposition to your grading policy. And I won't look into it very much, but there was a Zoom meeting yesterday where staff presented their ethical opinion, or their ethical basis for the policy. And I hope I got it right. And I, but I can't because under transparency, you haven't posted videos in two weeks. She said, students get what they need when they need it.
I'm sorry, this is off topic, sir. So if you wanted to do during the other public comment, off of things not on the agenda.
Even though the new superintendent made this comment? I'll wait till public comments.
All right. All right. All right.
Comments?
Yes. Yes, you can, of course, make comments.
So I also want to add, I want to give a thank you to Leadership Associates. You know, this is the same process that we followed in our last superintendent search, pretty much verbatim, with the timelines, with the way we engage the community. And they were so professional in the work that they did, and how they provided us information, how they brought us, how they worked with the applicants. They spoke to every single applicant. They did background research on every single person. They gave us their perspectives on, you know, what people that they did the background checks on said about them, whether they felt that they bet the community, what our community was looking for. And they were very helpful because, you know, as you know, we're elected officials. We're not here, I mean, our, one of our main roles is to hire the superintendent. And for me, it was really helpful because it's a lot of work to go do all that search. And I am not the qualified person to go do that search. I have done interviews and I've hired tons of people, but for different types of roles, because I don't work in education. So it was really helpful to have that perspective and that knowledge, so that we could have a good selection pool. And we had a great selection pool. And it was a very competitive process. And I'm really thankful to them. And I'm thankful to all of our applicants for showing up, for applying, and we wish them all the best of luck.
Thank you, trustee Whitaker. Anybody else comment? Yeah, go ahead, trustee Kuziak.
Hi, I'm making a comment. Thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, this is not anyone's full time job, the people on the board here. And we do rely on the support of staff. But we also, in these moments, I think, demonstrated as a unit, as five people, how we independently did come to a decision and work with some outside professionals to get us to the point where we needed to do. This was an exceedingly competitive job search for a role that is highly desired in a district that has come so far in the past decade. And as, as we make those decisions, as we try to be thoughtful leaders, I was saying this earlier when we were talking to our Van Nuys and Stanton kids, that's who we're centering this on. We're thinking about how do we support them going into the future. We have a school district that's profoundly more diverse than what is displayed in our broader community. The people with power, the people who are appointed to power by people with power in this community. We have a much more representative school district that is really the future of our district. Dr. Rishichi, I, I'm not an educator. You are an educator with a tremendous amount of experience, nearly 30 years of experience. And, you know, I haven't walked in your shoes. But I, you have my commitment to do two things for you. I'm going to ask you tough questions. Dr. Amati, Ms. Amati knows that there's, there's things that we have to do in this role. We have to both be critical. We have to ask questions. But we're also here to support this district. So you're going to get that from me. You're going to get those questions. But you're also going to get my support because I know when I think of the history of this community, we need to have allies. We need to support our leaders who are stepping up to represent our new Castor Valley. So I'm grateful to see you stepping forward. And you've got my support. And I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Trustee Howard.
I just want to say that I was on the board that selected Ms. Amati 10 years ago. And the process we used this year was exactly what we used 10 years ago. In fact, we pulled out all the material from 10 years ago and used it as the basis for figuring out what to do this time. That's point one. I'd like to make, a second point is, it's true that many of the general managers, superintendents, and other people in positions make a good salary. The salary that we're offering here is in the mid, mid range, because we surveyed all the superintendents in Alameda County, and actually a little beyond into Contra Costa County as well. And so it is exactly where it should be for a new superintendent, as opposed to a 13 year experience superintendent. So I was really happy with the process. I think it went very well. I really appreciated the help from Leadership Associates. It was terrific, the same as it was with the search firm that we hired at the last search. It went very well. So glad to be part of it. Congratulations to you.
Trustee Raymond.
Yeah. So I do want to say, with respect to just the search process, I was very, what's the word I'm looking for? It was really a priority, priority, priority to me going into it, that we get input, you know, from the community. And I, I feel like we got it. I know some of you feel like maybe we didn't. And I'm looking at you who are laughing at me right now. Okay. And I, I respect your opinion. All right. I, you know, I just, I do want you guys to know that, you know, we were given a summary of all of the surveying that was done, a summary of all of the community meetings that, that took place. At any point in time, anyone in this community could have emailed any of us directly with their thoughts on what you wanted personally, and we could have personally had a conversation about it. I got maybe two emails about that directly. So, you know, in terms of community engagement, I think we really, really wanted to make sure we had done that in this process. Another thing that was important to us, as President Adams noted in the 10 priorities, is that going forward, we have a superintendent who's really committed to communication and to improving the way we communicate as a district. That was a big piece of our conversation with all of our applicants and in reviewing all of our applications. That was a huge consideration for us. I don't want to repeat anything that my colleagues have said. I'm, I feel like in this choice, we have been able to recognize both the fact that there's a lot of very good stuff happening here in Castor Valley. And we've also been able to recognize that we can take where we are and make it even better. And Dr. Rishichi, I, I'm really excited to work with you. I support you 100%. Very happy with this choice. I feel like we not only reviewed quite a pile of applications, everybody in there, there were some really, really, it was very competitive, extremely competitive. It was important to us that if we hired internally, that, it was really important that any internal candidate, if they were to be chosen, really had met, you know, the, the, the task of proving to us why he belonged here. And I really 100% feel that that is what we've done. So, thank you for stepping up. Thank you for saying yes to the challenge. We're, I'm very glad to have you here. So.
I'll make a comment, but first I'll go to trustee Whitaker.
I just, in my thanks, I would be remiss if I did not thank our amazing Amy Keir, who supported us through this entire process. You are amazing at what you do. And we really appreciate having someone who we could go to, to support us that had that confidentiality and could help us get everything we needed and work directly with Leadership Associates. So Amy, I can't thank you enough. I know you do your job greatly every day. But just thank you again. This was a very heavy process with a lot of extra hours and time on all of our parts. But you definitely leaned in and I want to thank you for everything that you do. And I also want to thank Dr. Rishichi, because you are highly educated. You have years of experience in education. And we know full well that other districts were hoping to steal you. And we're really lucky that we're able to have you as our new superintendent. Because I believe in you. I support you. And I know you're going to do great things. And it's, it's a very complex system with a lot of stuff that we all have to face. But I have full faith that you will do an amazing job and you will support everyone in our district.
Madam President, I just.
Trustee Kuziak.
Yeah, I just, I just, I think it's important to remind those who might be in attendance here that this is a meeting of our board. They can have commentary and opinions, but keep it to yourself, please. Thank you.
Trustee Howard.
One more thing I'd like to add. I should have said this before, but I forgot it. Last time we were selecting, we interviewed two candidates. And the search firm that we had that time, I don't remember who they were, but they said that the hardest decision we would have to make would be to choose between the candidates that they suggested. And they were right. And the person that we did not select, in fact, became a superintendent within a few, couple of months thereafter, in a major district around Alameda County. This time, we, we interviewed four candidates. And all four of the candidates were outstanding. And any one of the four would have been a really terrific choice for Castor Valley. And I think that all four of those will be superintendents within the next few months. So we were really lucky in both 10 years ago and now, in the choices that we had. And I'm happy that we got Ms. Amati and Dr. Rishichi. Thank you very much.
Okay. I just wanted to say that one of the things the Leadership Associates told us is we are a very desirable district. There's a number of reasons for that. I'm not going to go through all of them. But some of them are because we are not in declining enrollment or we are a growing district. We are solvent financially. And because of this, we had a lot of really good candidates and very highly well qualified applicants. It was very hard for us to choose. Now, a former board member, Joe Loss, as I read here, had said that not only just our last time that we picked a superintendent, but for the last three superintendents, the system was the same, the way that we did this. And then last night, I heard from Jim Negri saying how Leadership Associates is such a great group. He is a, Jim Negri is a former superintendent. So we picked a really good group associates to help us find a, the best candidate for Castor Valley. And we also did it in a way that follows the values that Castor Valley has had. Castor Valley is a really great school district, remains to be so. And I'm sure under the great leadership of Nia Rishichi, Dr. Rishichi, it will continue to be a great school district. Superintendent Amati.
Yeah, I'd like to just share a couple of things. First of all, a succession plan is one of the most important things that any district can have. And that's what we have. I have been extremely fortunate to work with this amazing board and these, and Ms. Keir, and these three assistant superintendents, who have been phenomenal. And the fact that we have, that you've selected one, says a lot about your, this district and what's been happening. I also want to say, it is absolutely the way, and actually, my friend Kelly Bowers, who used to be the superintendent named Livermore, can also vouch for the fact that this is the way you select superintendents. If you go out, you go through a search, and you do exactly what you did. This process, and I say that because not only have I been a superintendent here for 10 years. I was the president of Association of California School Administrators, where 18,000 administrators are in it, pretty much know many, many superintendents in this state, and many of them would have loved to come here and probably applied. Several of them applied that I know of. And you selected who you felt was the right person for this job. And I can't be anymore, I mean, she's incredible. She is going to be a shining star as she has been. We have three amazing people here who have done great work. And it is also not unusual to just appoint your assistant superintendent to this position. In fact, many districts around California have done that. Next door, Fremont, down the street, they just appointed their assistant superintendent, who had many, some years of experience, but not as an assistant to, to the position of superintendent in Fremont. You still went through the process and selected the person that you have selected. So I just want to congratulate you. I want to congratulate you and our team here and our school district. Thank you.
Dolly, can we do a vote?
Yes. Let us go to the vote for this. Trustee Kuziak.
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
Yes.
Trustee Raymond.
Yes.
And I will also enthusiastically say yes. That is, congratulations, Dr. Nia Rishichi. All right. Oh. What? Yes. We're going to go on to 7B approval of employment agreement for Dr. Nia Rishichi and as the district superintendent, effective July 1, 2025.
I'll move that we approve the employment agreement for Dr. Nia Rishichi.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, that's great. Would we like to have some discussion? Anybody?
Briefly. I just want to thank our legal partners and also Dr. Rishichi. I was the designated, and Dolly and I negotiated the contract. And we were up against a deadline to, with, with the, making sure it got on the agenda. And I appreciate the, the ease it with, which we were able to come to consensus on it. So thank you. And thank you again, F3, our legal advisors.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. You did the vast majority of that work. All right.
I would like to also. I would like to also make a comment. I know that I mentioned that we work with Leadership Associates for the comp in the area, and Gary also mentioned in the median. But I also want to remind our community that this district has 9,500 students. That's a lot of kids. We have over 750 employees? Almost 1,000 employees. Man, I was way under. That's a big group and community and a lot of things moving to manage and take care of. And the amount of time a superintendent spends is very long. And it, you know, when we think about compensation, we want to pay people compensation that is applicable to comparable to people being paid within the same region. And I'm really proud of Leadership Associates who came forward with us and advised us. But we had already had a range that we'd agreed upon and it fit within that range. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, trustee Whitaker. All right. If we don't have any more discussion, we'll bring this to a vote. Right, trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. That's 5-0. The contract is approved.
For President Adams, could I say a few words?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank my daughter and for my sister for being here tonight. For this, what I consider, I am thrilled and honored for this opportunity. And I know that, I really understand the deep responsibility of the role of superintendent. And I am dedicated to continuing to do the amazing work that we are doing in Castro Valley Unified School District with you, the hard work, because we work hard. And that is to support our students, our staff, and our community. And I am dedicated and committed to continuing to do that work on a daily basis. And we can only get better and better and better together. So, I am committed to that work. I hope everybody in this room is as well. And we got work to do, folks. But I'm committed to it. So, thank you so much. And let's do this together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alrighty. We are going to go to California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association.
Don't we have a five-minute recess?
No, we're going to
Oh, we're going to skip it.
Because we did it earlier.
Okay, but can I just ask if Nia can take pictures with her family real quick?
Oh, okay, sure.
Maybe like a three-minute pause for some pictures.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess, sure. Okay. All right, we're going to come back into session. Okay. So, now we are going to have our our labor partners. And starting with CEA report, I believe manuals on via Zoom. Okay. Let's just wait a minute for this to come up.
Good afternoon and thank you, board members, for this opportunity to speak with you. I would like to begin by, on behalf of CSEH Chapter 52, congratulating Dr. Rishichi on her new appointment as superintendent. And we look forward to working with you and helping our classified employees. This week, we're celebrating CSEW Week. We started with a kickoff event last Friday at Canyon Middle School. We had about 70 attendees. We enjoyed some catering from Rigatoni's. We gave away some prizes, gift cards, and some centerpieces. And thank you also to Superintendent Amadi for participating. We also held our first negotiation meeting on Monday. From the district, we had Aaron Ackerman, Dr. Dustin Gashiru, and Dr. Raul Samora. So, we thank them for their time. We had a very positive discussion and a good exchange of ideas. We look forward to our next session on June 3. And we are also still in the process of going through the governors may revise and how that may affect our future talks. We also had our monthly meeting. And we had a guest was Sharon Truquins, who shared a facilities presentation. For those who have not had the opportunity to share their input, please go to the website and share your opinions on what you would like for our facilities projects in the future. We also hope that we can continue to have this change with Trin Quins on reaching out to us as a union and getting our input with those projects. Then finally, yes, we had the Employee of the Year and retirees event. It was a very nice ceremony. We congratulate all the classified and certified honorees from each site. We also like to say best wishes to all the retirees and thank them for their years of service. They gave their time and their time helped better the education of Castro Valley. So, thank you to all the retirees and best wishes in the future. And also, this being the last meeting of the year, I just want to say thanks to Amy Kairi for all the technical support she gave me in helping establish this through emails and some meetings. So, thank you, everyone, for your time. And I look forward to seeing you all at the graduations next week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We are now going to hear from Larissa Polvita from CBTA.
Please bear with me. It's been a very long day. Good evening. My name is Larissa Polvita, President of Castro Valley Teachers Association. And I'm here tonight to deliver my final address of the 2024-2025 school year. To say this year has been a learning curve is an understatement. Much like being a first-year teacher or a first-time parent, being a first-year union president brings a unique set of challenges that would be impossible to prepare for without living through them. That being said, many who have walked this path before me have validated that my first year of presidency has been fraught with challenges, with more challenges than is typical. As the end of the year draws nearer, I've been spending time deciding on a word that I would use to describe this year's experience. The word I keep landing on is disappointing. I'm disappointed at the discord that can exist at the bargaining table. I don't understand why the process continues to be so tedious, time-consuming, and fraught with division instead of partnership. It's disheartening to have our team's proposals rejected entirely without explanation or counter-proposals other than the status quo. Heck, sometimes we have to fight for days just to keep the status quo. It's exhausting to spend hours surveying members, poring over data, and researching district reports to be sure our team is making reasonable proposals based on what membership wants in a way that is respectful of the district's goals and budget, only to be told that the numbers aren't really as the budget lays them out or to have the figures we've painstakingly calculated be twisted into an absolutely impossible worst-case scenario. It's frustrating to ask for evidence of a claim or argument made by district representatives only to be made to wait for hours, days, or weeks on end to get what should be accessible in minutes. Yet, I have hope each year, when we sit across the table from one another, that the tactics and tone at the bargaining table will be different. That the time and effort CVTA puts into each proposal will be matched by CVUSD. Sadly, we don't see that very often. I'm disappointed that there are so many disconnections in this district despite a well-publicized effort to create a welcoming, equitable, and inclusive space that should apply to all. I've met with each and every school board member in the past month. And each of you has acknowledged a lack of awareness or understanding regarding what's happening at the district office and at the school sites themselves. How are you able to make informed decisions without having an honest survey of the landscape you're being asked to shape? Because of your categorical rejection of hearing and appeal, several community members are here once again this evening, wondering the same thing. Why this doesn't seem to bother more of you is a mystery to me. I'm disappointed by the isolation that exists between certain departments and personnel within this building. Each of us are professionals, yet at times, I don't receive professional courtesy. I'm astonished at how deep the divide between administration and staff can be. Long gone are the days of classroom pop-ins for the sake of positive feedback, convivial connection, and general joy in the workplace. Administrators and staff alike are stretched too thin with myriad meetings, demands, and foci being adjusted year after year. Those shifts begin at the top. It doesn't have to be this way, though. I have hope that we will earnestly focus on communication, clarity, and understanding before moving forward with change. I am disappointed that CVUSD made a personnel choice, shrouded in secrecy, to involuntarily transfer employees. While I am grateful that the Marshall community continues to show up demanding answers, it saddens me that the decency that should have been afforded all along was disregarded. I don't know when it became acceptable to claim specific and compelling reasons without any paper trail, chance for corrective behavior if necessary, or due process. But we now know without a doubt that's a boundary CVUSD is willing to cross. For the school board to support the decision to blame two teachers for years of mismanagement, then not listen to their perspective is cruel. I'm disappointed at the precedent this will set for any and all of us who can at times be challenging at our work sites. For those of you sitting around the dais who shared in our meetings that you don't believe that to be the case, again, I go to the word disconnect. I'm disappointed that as I stand here before you tonight, we have two open grievances. One waiting for a potential list of arbitrators to be named, the other potentially heading that way because there hasn't been the respect for our contract nor collaboration that there should be between labor partners and the district. Yet, I have hope, with a purposeful shift to put transparency at the forefront, wonders can be done for morale and trust. I would be remiss if I failed to acknowledge the dedication of Superintendent Amadi to Castro Valley Unified over the past decade. You have been a consistent voice supporting the humanity of all associated with CVUSD in our district. We have been lucky to have you at the helm for so long. I am disappointed that decisions made in your waning days are likely going to overshadow the initiatives you focused on previously. I hope you thoroughly enjoy family time and whatever adventures come your way in retirement. I'd also like to publicly congratulate Dr. Nia Rashidshi on obtaining your doctorate and being named superintendent. May has certainly been a momentous month for you. I have hope that moving forward, we can continue to strengthen our positive working relationship in a way that focuses on transparent communication and mutual respect so that together we can uplift the entire CVUSD community because that's what's best for our students. That's what CBTA wants. That's what the parents who move to Castro Valley for the schools want. And I have hope that that is too what you want. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, we have, this is 10 now, public comment for items not on the agenda. We have eight people who have asked to speak. These are, seem to be in the order that they were given to me, so starting with, and we have eight and we have up to a half hour of this time, so each person will get three minutes. The first person is Gabriella Penwell.
Hi, I'm Gabriella, and I'm a student at Marshall. It is so upsetting that I am losing teacher I should have next year. She's a teacher who has been guided, protected, and inspired us. She is being removed with no reason, no meaning, no vote, just let it do better for us. We consider the decision, let them stay where they belong. Let me and my siblings have the teacher we need.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Isabella Penwell.
Good evening. I'm Isabella, speaking as a concerned parent and taxpayer. What's most disturbing about the teacher transfers isn't just the decision, it's the lack of transparency. Families showed up with questions, and they were met with guarded doors, blocked entries, and no answers. The appeal letters were denied with no meaning, no vote, or no public explanation. This is not how public education should operate. The district cannot just move teachers, ignore appeals, and issue decisions in the dark. We expect the board to lead with openness, accountability, and respect for the process. Right now, none of that is happening. Please restore the trust that has been lost. Please show our kids better. You talked about Stanton and Vanoy today, but what about our children? We have a principle that half of our students are terrified of. You talk about you're taking two staple teachers from our school, the start and the end of our elementary school years. Nia, if you are all these things the board says you are, and you do want to make change for our community, please consider letting our teachers stay for our children, not just for politics and the board issues, but for our children. I have kids that haven't even started school yet. I have kids that are going into fifth grade. This directly impacts me, my family, and my children. We're going to be left with teachers. We don't even know who we have yet. There are just going to be some new hires that we don't know how they care about our children. These teachers, we trust, we care about them, and we know they care about our students. And that's hard to come by nowadays. It's really hard. So thank you, guys.
Okay, the next person, I can't quite read the handwriting exactly right, but I think it's Lotu Zilika. Okay, please come on up.
My name is Lotu Alika, and I've been in Marshall Elementary since kindergarten. Last time, all you did was not listen and roll your eyes, so better be sure to listen to mine. I am disappointed of who decided to try to kick out these teachers. Shame on you, whoever decided to do this. Shame on you.
Our next speaker is Brian Foster.
Thank you again. So just a response to the, to last discussion that you had. I personally don't care about the process you had, and I personally thought you spent actually very little money for a search firm. What I do have a problem with is that you all seem to be, you all seem to be defensively reacting against that as the process, and I don't care so much about the process. Well, I do, because you had like a Monday morning meeting with the Friday morning, or Friday, you know, notice of that, and then immediately went on. I'm actually surprised you got two people calling you because until this particular meeting, I don't think anybody knew, at least on the outside, who was being appointed, so why would they call? But I, yeah, I'm concerned that you're hiding behind the process. What we, what we elected you for is for your decisions, not the process, the decisions. Okay, back to what I was saying before. So I, again, I'm happy that you got your, your big beautiful contract. But again, there's at some point a morality issue with respect to salary levels. You, you know, the union president just spoke about union contracts, and I don't know any of the details, so I won't comment on that. But when you, when you have salary steps of a couple thousand dollars for regular teachers, juxtaposed against a hundred thousand dollar bump for one person, at some point, you run out of money. You cannot meet the teachers' needs. And let's be honest, that's where most of, really what this whole process is about, is the classroom, teachers and the students. You essentially squeeze out the money from the classroom into executive salaries. So let's be really clear about that. So you have a big, beautiful contract. Congratulations to you, and I'm jealous, frankly. I would have taken it for a lot less. But then we also have other things that resemble was happening recently. And I don't have time now to read it, and it's on the video that's not yet posted. But a definition was finally provided for equity in yesterday's Zoom meeting. It is the exact opposite of what Merriam-Webster's asked for equity. It reminds me of Kristi Noem, right? I don't know if you know what's been happening recently with that, but she didn't know what habeas corpus was. She gave the exact opposite meaning. And I'm wondering, what kind of a world are we living in where the opposite is becoming true and common sense is gone? It's just, it's just gone. So start questioning things. Try to find out what the real resources are, what the real money is. We have the big, beautiful bill. We have the nonsense about definitions. Transparency issues are continuing, at least with the, with the people we have here. And I'm wondering, why is this happening? You know? And again, I ask you, ask in your hearts, why is this happening? I would have loved for it, for everyone to be able to say, yay, this is all great, but a significant portion of this community is questioning what's happening. Why? You know, universally, why? I don't know. You're elected. Find out. So with that, I'll just say, you know, elections are going to happen in about a year and a half, and a lot of these people will remember. I've been personally emailed by a lot of people I don't know, never met. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tojo Thomas.
All right, good evening. My name is Tojo Thomas. I'm here as a parent. I'm not representing any organizations here. First of all, Fatima, congrats. It's been a tough year, and you know, congrats to you. All the best in college. First thing, first thing I want to talk about is, oh, I got 2:41, okay. First thing I want to talk about is, I'm concerned with some of the comments board makes. I'm not talking about anybody else's board. A couple of parents have talked to me regarding party lines. Don't discriminate against our kids because the parent is conservative, parent is a liberal. Some of the comments that's, I'm not going to name names, but our kids are our kids. Your job is to make sure they get the best education. They're kept safe, not what their parents, parents' party lines are. I could be liberal. I could be a Democrat. I could be a conservative. That's, that's discrimination when you pick on the kids because their parents are following a different, different party line. Second thing I want to talk, talk about, a lot of parents talk about lack of transparency. That's been an issue for a while, and I fought for the safety of the kids, SROs and all that stuff, death fears, that's fine. But lack of transparency, it needs to come back. And Doctor, congrats to you. You have a tough job ahead of you, but congrats to you. I'm a person of color, and I love, I love people of color coming up, and it's beautiful to see, and congrats. There's a lack of ethics and integrity. A lot of people talked about it, and I'm also concerned. This is all school district, Castro Valley is my town, and I'll be here. I'll be coming up and speaking up. I'm not backing down doing anything, but you know, please listen to my comments and take it serious because like the last speaker said, community is not happy. All right, take care.
Our next speaker is Carol Maher.
Hello, I'm Carol Maher. I taught for the school district for 30 years. There's nothing negative in my file until three months after I was approved to be a long-term sub at Marshall School, all of a sudden they have this negative feedback form that they present me with. It's, it's not true. And well, one, they're supposed to give it to me within 10 days of the incident, not three months later when they want to fire me and get me out of Jamie Horace's classroom, all because I supported Hannah Banchini because for some reason at that school, all the teachers had to write a racial autobiography about themselves and present it. And so I supported her because she was, she was my lifeline when I was taking in this classroom because they, her and Jamie Hor met with the teachers that agreed to take the position. And she provided us with lesson plans, worksheets. She knew all the students in Jamie's class where we didn't. She knew all the parents. So she, like, I just kind of like was an assistant to her, you know, when we were out on the play yard or in the cafeteria. Of course, I was able to teach fine because I taught first grade and kindergarten for 30 years, so I knew what to do. But, and I know the curriculum, but like I said, you know, that's the real reason I got fired is because I supported her with the racial autobiography that she was forced to, to write and, and submit in front, you know, to the rest of the staff. None of the other schools had to do that, but Marshall sure did. So if you want to be looking at somebody that you need to get rid of, it would be Marshall's principal.
Our next speaker is Mary Koo.
Good evening. I wanted to highlight Ms. Carol. Thank you for the service that you did, for the time that you dedicated to our kids. I am a mother of a student at Marshall. I'm here to address the agenda, item 12C, as well as this involuntary transfer. You guys have brought up the, what is it called? Issue of having diversity, equality, equity. But what you guys have shown with this decision is that you're removing two teachers. That is part of our community. That does provide equity. Why? How are our students going to identify when you remove them? You know, not only just someone to identify with, but they also are advocates. Do you guys realize what happens in our school when we have students who are being bullied, that look different, that talk different? Who do they go to? Ms. Penn, Ms. Banchini, but you want to remove them. It's wrong. You guys are not upholding what you guys are saying that you guys want to hold. There's no equity here. There's nothing but power, control, silence, and fear. That's what you guys are establishing. That's what you guys have shown. You violated the Brown Act. You never put this stuff on the agenda. We never got to hear any of it. No appeal, nothing. So why should we even trust in you here? Why should we continue to vote you here? And Ms. Nia, I really hope that you do step up and show us and lead us and guide us to true meaning of equity, equality. Because this Castro Valley is developing with a huge diverse of people. And we need people who truly stand by that. Not all this power, control, fear, and silence. Thank you.
Our next speaker, if I read it correctly, is Beverly Wong.
So good, good evening. My name is Becky Wong, and I'm a parent at Marshall Elementary School. I'm here because our community is deeply concerned about the involuntary transfer of Ms. Banchini and Ms. Penn and the lack of transparency surrounding that process. The district cited Article 11.5.4.1 of the teacher's contract, which requires specific and compelling reason for the transfer. But then both teachers were told they don't fit the culture, a very vague and subjective excuse that doesn't matter, that standard. They appealed to the board on April 23rd, yet just five days later, they receive a denial letter signed by the board president, Dolly Adams, with no record of any meeting, discussion, or vote. That violates the Board Policy 4114, which requires the board, not the staff, to make the final decision and likely violate the Brown Act, which prohibits decisions outside of a public meeting. GOV Code 5494, I'm sorry, 5494, 54 dot 2. This board owes our community answer. This decision must be revisited, publicly explained, and corrected. In conclusion, I just want to express that I don't like public speaking, but I am stepping out of my comfort zone. I'm here because I want to support the teachers, okay? They're helping our kids, okay? I mean, they're helping our children every single day. So we need to be stand by the teacher when they need help. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
We have three more people. One of them is online. I think we'll do that now, and that is Laura Telomarion. Just take a minute to come up.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Good evening. Can you see me or you can only hear me, just so I know?
Just here.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and congrats to the school board and to Dr. Rik Shishi for the appointment. My name is Laura Telomarion. I'm a parent of multiple children in the district and a Castro Valley homeowner. By day, I'd say I'm a tech executive, and by night, I'm a loving, caring Castro Valley parent. For those that are unaware, on May 14th, I met with several district leaders to seek to understand the ongoing capacity planning that affects our students and facility and everybody in the room right now and online and in the district. As we know, Castro Valley has been rezoned to add over 1,800 units within Castro Valley. Please know that the conversation continues. I respectfully ask that the board add capacity planning topic to a future agenda. Our district has always excelled because we plan ahead. Our children need that same foresight. I continue to advocate for this topic until the day that we have an acceptable solution in place. With that, thank you for listening, and I will see you next time.
Thank you. And I believe we have Ellen Sang in the room.
Good evening. My name's Ellen Sang. I'm a parent at Marshall.
Good evening. My name's Ellen Sang. I'm a parent at Marshall Elementary. I'm here because the involuntary transfers of Ms. Penn and Ms. Banchini were not only unfair, they appeared to be unlawful. Both teachers filed appeals with this board. But on April 28th, they received denial letters signed by the board president, despite no public meeting, no agenda items, and no vote. That's a violation of your own policy, Board Policy 4114, which says the board must make the final decision, not one individual. It's also likely a violation of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954 dot 2, which prohibits board action outside of public meeting. The community deserves to know who made the decision, when, where was it voted on. On April 16th, Marshall parents had organized a school walkout to express their frustration on this issue. 131 students were absent on that day of walkout with only two-day notice. That means something. That says something. The community is watching. Please do the right thing and fix this. I have a kindergartner, which is she's my beautiful little girl, first year in Marshall Elementary. I am not expecting this to happen at her first year at school and where we moved to our dream home, looking at Marshall Elementary down the street and thinking this is going to be the school I'm going to keep my children on. And if you really listen to the parents who is crying and children's who are suffering inside the campus right now, this is what's happening. If you remove these two teachers from their post right now, you will create this fear that will break the entire system of Marshall. If your employee are afraid to speak up, your culture is broken. Ms. Goodman is literally doing it every single day. I don't know if you're on online, online, any kind of online. The two teachers' names is literally removed from the teacher's bulletin from the board two weeks, not even two weeks before the end of the school year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sang.
Somebody is doing it to humiliate them. This is a workplace bullying act and I hope you guys fix this. Thank you.
Our last speaker for part 10 is Wilson or Will San.
Good evening. My name is Paulson, concerned parent of Marshall School. Last time we spoke up and nothing changed. Now, two respected teachers are being involuntarily transferred within the blurry reason that they don't fit in the school culture. If they're unfit here, but fine at other schools, what are you really saying about other schools, Marshall, or about the teachers? So per Article 11.5.4, it allows transfers only for a specific and compelling reason. Let's be honest, culture sounds like a convenient cover for politics, personal preferences, or something you're not willing to name. Maybe you guys think you might be doing the right thing for the school and assume the public just needs time to for changes. In fact, you guys are setting a very bad example for the good teachers. They will stop raising concerns or standing up for what's right if they believe it will cost them their job. We are watching, we are organizing, and we will not accept blurry explanations for nonsense decisions that hurt our children's learning. We demand a fair review, transparency, and accountability now. Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to go on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to move approval to consent agenda.
All second.
Thank you. And I'd like to take a vote on that. Any comments or questions? Okay. School board member Said?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. Okay, we now have several items on number 12, reports, discussion, and action items. Superintendent Amati was going to give us a little rundown on these. So Dr. Zamora is going to introduce the first one.
As the, our TV tip team comes up to present our next item, I'd just like to give a great thanks to the TV tip. And they had double assignments this year. One was their accreditation process. So they had to go through a process to be accredited to continue providing service for induction teachers. On top of their regular assignments, which is supporting teachers as well. So I commend our team very well and I celebrate our teacher induction team. So we'll start off with Megan Sutcliffe, our coordinator of TV tip. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Zamora. I appreciate it. I think we might need to take a stretch break. Is that possible? Like 60-second stretch break? Okay, I just, we don't need to take breath and stretch and we're going to be celebrating a lot of things today.
We can't hear you. Sorry.
I just, can we just take a 60-second stretch break or just take a breath?
Yeah.
Thank you again for that introduction.
Well, go ahead. Close the door.
Good evening, Board President Adams, members of the board, Superintendent Amati, and Cabinet. Thank you for that introduction. My name is Megan Sutcliffe and I am the coordinator of our teacher induction program here in Castro Valley Unified. With me tonight is my amazing team, Joanna Hogan, Don Guler, and Lauren. I'm near less than just. Brief. Thank you again for letting us present tonight.
You all are awesome. We already know that. Keep going. So what is TV tip? What is? You all have, many of you have heard this presentation before. I'll do my best to be brief. TV tip is our, is Castro Valley State Approved Induction Program. Induction is, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
After completing a preparation program and earning a preliminary credential, all teachers are required by the state of California to participate in induction, which is two years of supported programming in order to obtain a clear credential. TV tip helps teachers fulfill this requirement by providing job-embedded, individualized coaching. Each teacher is paired with a highly trained coach, who is also an experienced teacher. Coaches are fully released from classroom duties so they can visit new teachers' classrooms regularly during instructional time. These visits allow coaches to observe teaching, provide real-time feedback, and offer targeted support based on each teacher's unique needs and classroom environment. The full release model also allows coaches to participate in regular professional development. We strive to bring equity-focused, high-leverage instructional practices to our teachers by using well-researched coaching strategies that help teachers focus on their emotional well-being, their core values, and their vision for their students. We strongly believe in caring for teachers while centering the needs of the children they teach.
So in our consortium, which includes Livermore, Castro Valley, and Dublin, we have 13 coaches and four of those are in our district. Over the past few years, the coordinators have been very intentional about how they plan the six monthly hours of training and PD that coaches participate in. With that in mind, they developed the acronym Coaching with Heart, building habits of mind with an equity lens by aligning our processes and reflecting as a team. The theme continues to guide our work this year as a consortium with our teachers. In Castro Valley, the four of us support 57 teachers who support over 4,000 students. So our program reach, we have in our 57 teachers, 32 credential teachers, 20 interns, and five short-term staff permit teachers. The induction process includes goal setting, along with their admin goal setting, an inquiry process, gaining a deeper understanding of classroom students and their needs. We do four to six hours a month with each teacher. We do individualized classroom visits, teacher meetings, help with classroom management, instructional practices, and just-in-time support.
So a TV tip coach, or as some may say, a Sherpa of services, is an adept instructional leader, proficient in guiding teachers towards innovative practices through continuous collaboration, mentoring, modeling, and reflection. As previously stated, we work one-on-one, starting with a focus on teacher-chosen goals based on the CSTPs or California Standards for the Teaching Profession. As coaches, we aim to balance just-in-time support with a vision towards long-term professional growth. As TV tip coaches, we strive to strike a balance between providing timely assistance and fostering a vision for sustained professional development. Our overarching goal is to accelerate growth and enrich the advancement of participating teachers through a thoughtful, continuous, and systematic approach during their participation in our high-quality teacher induction program. As our motto states in our logo, we are supporting students one teacher at a time. Still me. This is a quick view of our year at a glance with our teacher candidates. We begin the year by using the CSTPs to develop professional goals, then move into learning about students and their diverse needs. We spend time understanding students by digging deep into a class profile, selecting focused students, and using an inquiry cycle to identify and meet the diverse needs of these students. Our year continues with bi-weekly or sometimes more observation feedback cycles, a second inquiry cycle focused on individual ILP goals, encouraging veteran teacher observations, and consistently reflecting on teacher practice to show growth and competence.
You know how to diffuse the tension. Let's look at some data. We love data. TV tip is actually really focused on data to evaluate the effectiveness on our program, of our program. We pull from a lot of data sources, but I find the most valuable one, or we find that the most, some of the most valuable information comes from the surveys that we give to our teachers throughout the year. This and the next two slides are going to serve, show you the past three years worth of data. This first one shows the answer to the question of whether teachers feel the activities they do with their coach have a positive impact on their teaching and learning. Activities like discussing effective instructional practices, I wish I had a little thing that I could point to. It's up there. It's the last one. Discussing effective instructional practices and setting and reflecting on goals got consistently positive responses from teachers over three years, confirming that these are high-impact activities for teacher development. Activities around getting to know students have been a particular focus for us since 2023. The data that year showed us that we needed to improve our coaching in these skills. We did a lot of work around this and our efforts really paid off. We saw a 19-point increase in positive responses over three years. We succeeded in growing our coaching skills and teachers now feel better about their relationship building and student-centered practices. I moved too fast. Our program is making a measurable difference in how teachers plan, reflect, and engage with their students, all of which has a direct impact on classroom learning. Now we'll go to this one. We also asked teachers whether they feel prepared by their coaches in relation to the California Standards for the Teaching Profession. This slide tells us the percentage of teachers who indicated they felt well-prepared across six CSTPs over the past three years. Our teachers are telling us that our program is equipping them with skills and knowledge aligned with the California Standards for the Teaching Profession, which are the standards by which they are evaluated by their administrators. And lastly, my last data set. Beyond instructional impact, we also want to understand how our teachers are feeling about the personal relational side of the coaching that they're getting. This slide lays out that data. It shows how valued and supported teachers in TV tip feel. This year, 100% of respondents reported that their relationship with their coach is collaborative and respectful and that their coach is skilled at meeting their needs. We've reached a place where 100% of our teachers feel respected, supported, and seen by their coach. That level of trust doesn't happen by chance. It's the result of intentional, consistent, and high-quality coaching over time. That's more than a win for our program. It's a win for this district in terms of teacher retention, professional growth, and ultimately, student success.
According to open-ended questions on our teacher candidate survey data, we heard consistent and powerful themes in teacher feedback. What stood out most was the emotional and professional support our coaches provided, as you saw. Teachers emphasized how deeply they valued having someone they could reflect with, talk to, and rely on, especially during difficult times. They applauded the immediacy and impact of the feedback they received. This feedback was personalized, actionable, and directly tied to their teaching practice. That kind of support makes a difference, not just in how they teach, but in how they grow. Coaches were recognized as knowledgeable, reliable, and responsive, even when navigating unfamiliar content areas. The strength of those one-on-one relationships built on collaboration and trust was described as transformative. The specialized support coaches offered in areas such as special education helped teachers manage cases, understand protocol, and support individual students more effectively. From instructional planning and classroom management to navigating student-specific challenges, coaches were described not just as, not just as helpful, but as indispensable allies.
There's some direct quotes from our teacher survey data. Some highlights include advising with equity and grace, having a depth of knowledge and experience, bettering instruction and student engagement, and helping connect with students on a deeper level. As you can see, the support given is truly appreciated by new teachers.
Besides receiving full accreditation with no stipulations, which we're going to talk about in a moment, we wanted to highlight other resources. So TV tip has monthly newsletters showcasing relevant teaching strategies, tech tips, SEL, mental health topics. We always have a monthly theme and have pertinent articles, activities, and suggestions for bringing joy into their classroom and with their students. We share out our newsletter to all new teachers and all site and district administrative staff.
All right, like Dr. Zamora said, we had a huge accreditation site visit this year. And just to kind of put it in perspective, we've been working on this since pandemic August 2020. So this graphic illustrates our roadmap towards achieving that full accreditation for our induction program. We initiated that institutional approval process back in August 2020 with Livermore serving as the lead agency. And then since receiving provisional approval in 2021, we've successfully operated our program as a multi-district consortium without encountering any significant obstacles. So the logistics of that day, so just eight weeks ago, we had our virtual site visit that lasted two and a half days. Three CTC induction leaders were part of that CTC interviewing team. They interviewed all three district superintendents, our steering committee, all three district leadership coaches, teachers, and other induction leaders in our region.
Over 127 people were interviewed. We were very lucky for all the people that took time out of their day after school to be interviewed by the team. If you're interested to see our schedule and list of participants, they're linked here in the slide deck. Here's some of the feedback that we received from the CTC team. They shared that our program is deeply valued by all stakeholders and considered essential, as evidenced by its protected budget. There's a remarkable and consistent positive sentiment towards the program across all levels of participation. Our highly individualized support provided to candidates is a significant strength and is highly appreciated. Our coaches play a vital role and are recognized for their exceptional efforts and timely support. Our program fosters effective collaboration with partners, leading to mutual benefits. Our program's practice of involving stakeholders in feedback creates a sense of ownership and strengthens its impact. And if you need light reading before bed, there was a summary of the report, and then the really long 25-page, so that's there as well. So yes, like Dawn said, we had all standards fully met for full accreditation. Yes, we were so happy. We were expecting just to have like one little thing to maybe fix, but we got 100%, and we were just completely in shock. And just, I added on the bottom, the fast fact of 30% of programs who go through accreditation have stipulations that usually have something to fix. But we didn't have anything to fix, and we're still a little bit shocked, but. Next steps are, we actually, on April 17th, we came before the Committee of Accreditation, where they also unanimously approved our recommendation of accreditation. And then the last and final step is we go before the Committee of Teaching, the CTC Board on June 27th. So that's the last final yay, we're done. But yeah, we're very proud of the zero stipulations and still in shock, so. Wanted to say some thank yous of appreciations for some people, especially this last couple of years. Our success of full accreditation has so much to do with the support from our district, and I wanted to take a moment just to share some appreciations. Karen Eisenberg, I know you're probably asleep and maybe listening, but our amazing Karen, she's our credential analyst for our district. Her work behind the scenes is absolutely essential to the success of our program. Every teacher hired in our district gets to meet Karen and quickly realizes how lucky we are to work with someone so caring, kind, patient. Over the past five years, she has just played a critical role in making sure our program is fully aligned with credential requirements. She meticulously verifies every single credential and provides exceptional support and knowledge, especially to teachers navigating complex situations like out-of-state or international credentials. And her kindness does not go unnoticed. Just last week, Dawn called her about just a question about units, and she gets off the phone and says, Karen is just the best. She's so nice. And that's what we've said more than once. So Karen, thank you so much for your dedication, your attention to detail, and your genuine care for every educator who crosses your path. We're just grateful for her. I have to say thank you to Dr. Zamora. Your support through this accreditation process, we could not do it without you. From the very beginning, you have been dependable and approachable leader, consistently available to address our questions, provide guidance, and ensure we have the necessary resources to proceed with confidence. Your steady presence and thoughtful leadership provided reassurance during the most challenging phases of this endeavor. We could always rely on you to advocate for our initiatives and to support our team wholeheartedly. So thank you very much for your dedication, your professionalism, your unwavering commitment to the program, and we are beyond grateful. And last, last but not least, Ms. Amati, just thank you so much. As you head into a well-deserved retirement, we cannot let you go without recognizing how deeply you have supported our teacher induction program for the past 10 years. During your time here in Castro Valley, you have understood the true value and importance of, let me try again, you have understood the true value and importance of induction, not just as a requirement, but as a meaningful investment in the growth and success of our newest educators. You believe in our work, and because of that, you've championed it at every level. You don't just support the program, you advocate for it. Whether it's sharing the impact with district leadership or speaking with our CTC team about the importance, you make it clear that induction matters in our district. Your leadership has elevated our work and ensured that our new teachers are welcomed, supported, and they're set up to thrive. Thank you for being a true partner in this work, and your commitment has helped shape a stronger foundation for educators and students for use to come. We extend our sincere thanks and best wishes as you embark on this new chapter. Thank you. So more celebrating. We're going to end the evening with congratulating our Year Two teachers for completing the induction program. Our induction participants continue to work diligently with a coach, reflecting and refining practice with the goal of improving learning outcomes for all students. For those of the TV teachers that might be watching tonight, thank you for your dedication and commitment to our Castro Valley students. So we're going to say all of the names, and we'll clap at the end, if that's okay.
You get to start, because you have the most.
I'm going to just say the names of the people that I represented, or not represented, that I had the privilege of working with on this slide. Want you to notice my height difference with Rachel Anderson. She's just beautiful. So Rachel Anderson, 4th grade at Stanton. And I had the privilege of working with Katrina McGough, 3rd grade at Chabot. Alejandra Munoz Nava, 1st grade, DLI at Vanoy. Casey Peterson, kindergarten at Chabot.
I'll speak to the last two on this slide. I had the great privilege of coaching Malena Lesivik. She is the TKK Mild Mod SDC teacher at Castro Valley Elementary. And Sarah Rainey, who is the SDC Mod teacher, 3rd through 5th grade at Proctor. And I will have you note that her students made her graduation cap for her because they knew we were coming on that day. Congrats both Malena and Sarah.
I had the pleasure of supporting Justin Reinbold, and he's our elementary music teacher, and he's at all the different schools this year.
And then I also had the privilege of working with Carmen Seiler, 5th grade, CVE. Molly Sheridan, who teaches elementary PE. She's at Jensen Ranch for the majority of her time and also Vanoy. Ferosa Saliman teaches TK at Polimeris. Amy Wood, 5th grade at Independent. And Hamenish Shanak, 3rd grade at CVE.
I also had the pleasure of supporting Carly Becerra up at Redwood High School.
I represented Rebecca Benaboo, who's taught English at CVHS. Nisha Lal, who was in Year Two with me and Year One with the fabulous Pat Eppert. So she was lucky enough to have both of us, also an English teacher at CVHS. James Yu at Creekside, and Mr. Frank Matthews, who teaches science at Canyon. And he was actually an out-of-state person who had already taught for six or seven years. Such a friendly, nice man, very welcome to having me in his room and coaching him. And when we came to his room to kind of celebrate him and ask the kids what they appreciated, he got a little teary-eyed. It was really cute. But he's a fabulous addition.
I had actually two pictures of Frank Matthews, because the other picture, he's just standing like superhero. But can we give a round of applause to all these Year Two teachers? So just want to share, we go around to all the teachers' classrooms and recognize them in front of their students. If admin can join us, they join us, but we usually tell the students what it takes to become a teacher. We ask, you know, raise your hand if you'd like to be a teacher. And yes, we're writing down those names of second graders and kindergartners that want to be teachers to track them. But it's really fun just to hear all the things that the students say about their teachers in terms of just thanking them and their appreciations for their teacher. Each teacher gets a very fancy certificate, and we usually give them a small token of appreciation. But just to close, again, we want to thank Superintendent Amati, the board, and Dr. Zamora for your continued support of our induction program. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I do want to say a couple of things before the end of this presentation. First of all, TV Tip, this isn't like every school district. I mean, many school districts have actually decided this is not as important, and I think it is one of the most important things we can do to support our teachers. So I want to thank you for all your hard work. I also want to say that when you said, without any like findings or whatever they call, I mean, it's huge. It hardly ever happens. And lastly, I want to say, someone is sitting in this room who is absolutely instrumental in keeping this program together because Kelly and I fought pretty hard, arm in arm, to keep it when all of those things happened between several districts.
Can you stand up, Kelly? I can't see you.
I want to thank Kelly Bowers. She's right there. She can stand up. She and I had many, many conversations, but just, I tell you, without your leadership and your push from Livermore and all of us working together, we would not have been here. So I just want to thank you. And your newsletter, you just need to put it all together and make it a book. Everyone needs to see it. It's absolutely phenomenal. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much. I did click on one of those links, the one, the special ed one, and saw that really huge exhaustive list of possible goals for students. And I thought, I didn't need to make a copy of that. So, and that was just one of the many links that you had in there of resources for teachers. Trustee Kuziak.
Yeah, so I appreciate all of your hard work, and I want to congratulate you. And one of my earliest experiences as I came on, as a board member, was a little bit of chocolate chip cookie diplomacy and meeting with you all. That's all I do, guys. I bake cookies. But I really appreciate that it's teachers teaching teachers how to be teachers. And it really, as I've been here for these past few years, it's really unfolded to me what an art this is and how it's passed down. And that's really, that's just, that's really beautiful, honestly. And, you know, we've got a great team here. I've seen it. We are a district of excellence, and you're part of that excellence. So thank you for all that you do to turning these teachers into self-actualized teachers. Thank you.
And trustee Aman.
Well, I'm not shocked that you guys got your accreditation without any stipulations. I mean, it's so clear, just from the data that you guys showed, that whatever it is you are doing with these teachers is really working. I really love the word induction and the idea of induction. And I also really love professions that require the transfer of expertise into the new generation of providers. And I definitely think that that's something that can get lost, you know, in any profession. But I love the care that you guys are taking into it and putting into it. And yeah, just thank you for all of it. And also, I just want to acknowledge that you guys were making a really important presentation on the heels of a pretty intense board meeting here today. And thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for doing it. I appreciate it.
Trustee Whitaker.
So thank you for the presentation. I, you know, Ms. Becerra went through our school district, and as a teacher that's coming back. Do we have any other teachers that, besides Ms. Becerra, that went to our schools that are graduating this year? Yeah, that's just, you know, speaking of like, you know, having, you know, a group of people that come into our schools, like people want to not only work here, but they grew up here, and so that's really.
Homegrown.
See? Thank you for, you know, showing that what I'm saying is true.
And eggs being inducted, right, and growing in Castro. Isn't that induction when they put the eggs are being, you know, it's kind of.
And Lauren, you did teach here, and now you're inducting more teachers to teach here. That's pretty cool, too. And your kids go to school here, too.
Okay, I think, thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. Our next item, establishing a school district foundation update. Parveen Amati.
So Dr. Kelly Bowers is going to start us off, and I want to welcome her. Thank you for waiting so long to get on here. We usually are not so late, but welcome, welcome. This is the second, I think the last time Ms. Chan actually shared a few slides about what we were thinking of, and you had asked that we actually have Dr. Bowers come to give us more information and let us know what this is about, so you can give us direction.
So thank you. And before I segue into my official presentation, I just wanted to acknowledge what a momentous evening it is tonight. So congratulations to both of you. And then it did bring a little heartwarming feeling to see that TV Tip is not only continuing, it's thriving. It just makes you feel really great that our new teachers are getting the support they need. So thank you. So I will start, and it can be daunting. It looks like a lot of slides, but I can get through them, I promise. And feel free, since I was always a teacher, ask a question throughout. You don't have to wait till the end. So I am the retired superintendent from Livermore, but my new role is the Three Valleys Community Foundation CEO and President. But in a nonprofit, you do everything in between. So I'm going to start just a little history. A few of you may know a little bit about our current initiatives, and then looking ahead where we're going and where you might be able to go if you decide to partner with us. And when people ask about Three Valleys, I try to give them a short little tagline, and it's "Give, Grant, and Grow." People give, we grant funds, and the community grows. Our sense of belonging, our sense of community, and we actually can boost and elevate nonprofits and school districts to do the good work and fill in the gaps when other things aren't there for people. So where have we been? In the big context of community foundations, some people aren't aware of the difference of a community foundation and any other nonprofit. Most nonprofits have one cause. They might focus on breast cancer or foster use or some other really worthy cause. A community foundation is place-based. It's part of a large history and tradition. There's hundreds of them in the nation. We're one of the newest. And in that case, what we do is we focus on the Tri Valley, which is Three Valleys. But we're kind of hearing a lot of, it might be the Four Valleys if we count Castro Valley.
Yeah, I was asking.
Because it's traditionally the San Ramon Valley, the Amatera Valley, and the Livermore Valley. But what we have found is challenges and causes do not stop at the corridor, at the end of a city or county or region. And so increasingly, our footprint is going beyond that geographic base. But we definitely, so we definitely embrace wherever the need is. But it is something that's important to understand. The community foundation waits and looks and keeps the pulse on whatever causes surface. So when there were floods in Sanol, we brought in funds and gave $25,000 to the school there. When, if we were in the wildfires, thank goodness we're not, but that's where community foundations stand up and take care of things. And so we are very in tune with all of the health needs assessments from the counties, from the cities, from any other agency that is credible, and we try to work toward that. So you'll hear a little bit more about that. And we began in 2020. That was why I was still a superintendent. But we had an incredible group of people who were working on Three Valleys. I met them at my Rotary. They were presenting. And I decided I needed to support and champion the cause as an individual. Went home, told my husband, and we saw that they were looking for a CEO in the future. And I said, maybe one day. So I came for the cause, and I stayed for the job later. But if you think about where our journey began, there's $42 billion at that time in GDP in this area, and now it's up to $49 billion. And in a really healthy community, data shows that 1.5% to 2% of that money goes right back into the local resources and nonprofits. And what we have found, that there is a lot of wealth, there's a lot of capacity. But in this region, and then kind of the Tri Valley region, that portion of Alameda, Contra Costa County, I call the 5868 corridor, which you are part of, it is not going back locally at the numbers you would expect. And so we don't think it's that people aren't generous. We just think that people maybe don't know. And the other mantra we have is "Give where you live." But this morning, I did a presentation, about 150 people, on funding. And I said, I think I'm going to change it to also "Give while you live," because we don't want to wait until people just leave their, if they can leave their legacy, that's great. But, you know, isn't it great to give and then see where your money goes and see the impact right there, especially when you're talking about youth and children? So our leadership team, I don't know if you've heard of all of them, but I certainly had interfaced with them as a superintendent because all of these people were incredible. And I was very excited to see them in a different capacity in the nonprofit world. But many names you might recognize. And we are, we not only have our regular board, we have our advisors. And our advisors give us advice. That's what they do. They keep their fingers on the pulse of where the trends are. And our advisors give us advice. That's what they do. They keep their fingers on the pulse of where the trends are. We also have a professional advisors network, because we're dealing with people's hard earned money. We need to make sure we have trust and transparency. And we need to have experts about investing to grow the corpus to increase the impact. And so we have some of the very most respected people who are bankers, insurance folks, trust attorneys, and of course CPAs. Our vision is we envision a community where everyone has the opportunity to live a full and rewarding life. And we intentionally don't define that for them, because we don't think that's our business. We just want to make sure that as people define what they want to achieve, that we help that happen, make that happen. And we have a very thoughtful mission to strengthen the region through inclusive leadership, thoughtful funding, informed, and we added the word local and collaborative action. And yes, we use words like inclusion, inclusion and equity, and we don't shy away from that. In fact, we're doubling down, just in case anyone's listening or watching. Our values, integrity and transparency, again, equity, inclusiveness, and collaboration and innovation to the point where we reward and incentivize collaboration and innovation in our grant making. So we, we love it when organizations work together. We actually make more money available. And we also encourage innovation. I know often in education, it was always the tried and true or the research-based best practices. But we actually want also people to think of new ways of looking and doing in order to arrive at the best solutions for a community. So our journey began in 2020. We had a big launch. This is before I came along. Our first support was from the county supervisors. I'm sure you know Nate Miley and David Halbert. And then it has expanded since then. We started our first grant making with a focus on mental health. And then we expanded that and we increased support from the city. So so far, the city of Livermore, Dublin, and Pleasanton have been strong supporters. We then added more board members and we also competed to oversee the opioid settlement funding for Alameda County. Again, that's a critical issue, particularly with the fentanyl crisis. And that's something that has surfaced in our community. It's surfaced everywhere. But we knew we could do something about it and we're positioned to do that. So we encouraged that work. We also switched from San Joaquin County to Fremont Bank for our investments, because again, we want to practice what we preach and give, and make sure our funds stay local. So our current focus and initiative, well, I just love photos. I used to teach yearbook way back in the day. And so everybody who's around me has to be prepared. You're going to probably be on the camera at some point. But this is our group. And so we celebrate what we do and we make sure that we can bring people along with us. If they don't have a leadership position, it doesn't mean they can't contribute. The thoughtful funding piece, this is just a few little snapshot of some of our specialty funds. So community foundation, anybody with a passion and a cause, who doesn't want to start their own nonprofit can come to us and say, I have a purpose. I want to make this happen. How can you help? And so we, we take care of the back office, we take care of the tax part, the donor ID, the fiscal sponsorship, and then they can do the direct service and the work. And so that's been very exciting. My very first check I gave, of all things, since I was a Livermore recently superintendent, I was giving a $250,000 check to the Pleasanton Unified School District. It was for, they needed ADA compliance so their kids could have a track, a track meet. They couldn't host their track meets. And so they couldn't wait for the bond, which might come or not come. We didn't know. And so we said, let's make it happen. And we contacted a couple of donors we knew and then people got involved. So that was really fun. But, and some of them are small. In Dublin, we had a very small fund, but it was very meaningful. A police officer died in the light of duty, a deputy, and she, it was a medical emergency. Her surviving spouse was, became, you know, he has a single dad now with three kids and had to take care of childcare. So people wanted to give. They weren't sure about GoFundMe or where that money was going. They handed checks to the city. City said, help. So we took in the funds and got it done. So the, the other piece that we do is we try to get the word out that, about the people who are doing good work. Nonprofits don't have budgets to spend. They do, but they need to spend it on the cause. So, so we help elevate their cause. So we have a podcast, we have our social media. We also partner with groups that are far away. So when, you know, we had the hurricanes and all that, we set up a fund here and then we can send it or we can just partner and channel the funds there directly. And so our collaborative action is this again, I can't get away from the school. I take my board on field trips. I think it's funny. They don't need chaperones, but we go to see the nonprofits in action and to experience it. So we can speak to it, so we can sense it, so we can contribute, and we volunteer. And that's very meaningful. So these are just some of our stats. And I know you like stats, but you have a booklet. I brought some. But our most recent ones, we had one county that has given, but we're working with Contra Costa now. We have many corporate contributors. These are corporations who are invested here. They either have workers here, their client base, or they are based here. And so they love to give as well. And for a corporation, it's very, it's very appealing, because they can get nickel and dime by every, you know, fundraiser there is. Instead, they can give to us, we'll give to 102 organizations, and they can say, we gave you 102. We're giving that large cause. So I'm kind of a matchmaker. I take people with money and funds and a passion and a purpose and make sure I'm the conduit to get to the right place. In fact, I did have one gentleman who told me, he's the CFO of DoorDash. He was a graduate of one of the high schools locally. And he said, someone told me I should call you because I can't give money away. I was like, I can help you out. So we now have a scholarship. We just gave it the second year but this, on Monday night, a $10,000 scholarship to a young person who went to his alma mater. So it was really fun. And there you go. That's how it works. So overall contributions in this, even though we visioned in 2020, we weren't actually incorporated until 2021. So we're, you know, we're pretty, pretty young still. Not me personally, not organization. And we, our overall contributions have already been 7.8 million. And that was as of our fiscal year March, and we're already going up. And so that's been very exciting. So when we moved from founding champions to sustainability circles, so these are people who are ongoing givers. So it may not be a large amount, but everything adds up. We can have a million people give a dollar. We can have one person give a million. Doesn't matter to us. We just want to make sure that the funds come in, that they are entrusted to us, that we're good stewards, and then it's channeled where it will have the most impact, bless you. So these are our major funders and this is part of my commitment to them as I celebrate them, because they are giving in different ways at different levels, but they are making an impact for other people. And they're living their mission. We make sure that we're aligned with what they're giving. We granted, so that's the other thing. You hear sometimes some of the foundations, I hear even this morning, some of them give 4%. And I say, oh, wow. So we operate on less than 10%, usually about 8%. And then everything else goes out. So we're pretty lean, but it's very exciting. And so these are the range of types of funds that we have. We have our grants, we have our competitive grants. We have our fiscal sponsorship. If you were to have a fund with us, it would probably be the field of interest. Your interest is obviously your students and the community and education in the future. So these are some of the checks. I like the big checks, because again, it's a photo op. And we did our first community impact grantees. We chose mental health, because it was the one cause that surfaced repeatedly that crossed all demographics. It doesn't matter if you were living in Black Hawk or if you were struggling as a migrant farm worker in the vineyards in Livermore. Mental health might manifest differently, but it was crossing everywhere. And so we said, let's, let's do something about that. But when we gave funds for mental health, we did it with a very broad sweep. So there are some, like Discovery Center, that's all they work on. Or Allen Who Foundation, they work with suicide prevention with youth. But we have others that they might be a sports group, that's improving people's mental health. Or they might work with spectrum and elderly. And so they're making them feel less isolated. So mental health comes in many different packages and we support. Then the next year we expanded, because we had donors, we expanded to environmental health and sustainability, and also health equity and access. So we had lots of people step up for that. And then of course, the opioid crisis. It had touched my family personally. I lost a family member who was a very high functioning, high performing person who masked the pain from, from an injury at work and then ended up succumbing years later. And so, so it's not just professional, it's very personal. And it doesn't just affect the person. And these people who are affected, you see the stats and it's staggering, but even one person is too much, one life. And then all of the network of people who are affected. And so we constantly remind people that the impact does make a difference for that person and the generations that follow. So we were, we competed. We had to put our best foot forward. And we have given out $3 million in the first round of the opioid mini-grants. And that's all the way throughout Alameda County. So we did a little creep beyond the tri-valley, because we have to go where it's needed. And there are other parts of our county that hit even more than parts of the tri-valley. And these are just some of our stats that I always like to share. We have now 3,000 newsletter subscribers. And we have a lot of donors. We have a lot of people who, who are just eager to be tapped in and to, to feel good about things. And with a lot of the things in the federal government right now, where people are a little uncertain sometimes, they're not sure if they can make an impact, many of them are shifting more hyper-local. Saying, well, we know we can do things here. And that's something we welcome. So that's our pledge and focus, local foundation giving, new funds, which might be, work out for you. We average about a new fund a month. And then meaningful grants. So our linkage, we don't do this alone. We're all about collaboration and partnerships. And so you will see all of these different agencies work with us or through us at some point. Our youth focus, I had to give you some youth ones. So that was, the one on the right was, the top right, that's the Pleasanton check, 250,000. The one on the bottom was the scholarship I just mentioned. That was last year's, the Sanol Glenn one. And then we also had a really neat fund in partnership. We have the Partners for Local Press Fund, and this is to save local democracy, local voices. You know, the hedge funds are taking over. And a lot of the reporters with AI and fake news, you don't even know if we're going to have anything legitimate that's coming up. So we decided to partner with a group of, I don't say elderly, because I'm getting in there now, but I guess generationally, that from the 1950s, they were alumni from one of the high schools. They wrote a book to capture their memories and their stories. And they said, what do we do with money? We don't need the money. And so I said, we will channel it toward the Amador Valley award-winning, nationally acclaimed journalism program to keep it alive. And we've done that really successfully. So it's exciting to see future generation of storytellers.
Are you able to mobile deposit those giant checks?
No, but we have the real ones also.
I always imagined as a kid, like-
Can you, can you stick it in the-
Take it to the bank after the price is right.
If you could, I would do it. Actually, you may be able to now, because you can take a photo and mobile, I don't know. We'll see. So, and then this one was fun, because this was Castro Valley. Again, we had kind of adopted you guys. So we had a donor who, he's Accusetit, he invented, he's from Pleasanton, but he invented the stopwatch. And it's the only one that's been used on the real Survivor game, I guess. And now we know it's been replaced by, you know, everyone's, whatever they've got gadget, but they're still good. So he had kits that were worth $1,000 each to give out. He wanted to give it to every school in Pleasanton. Right? Because that's where he lived. And I said, well, you can work with us, but it can't just be Pleasanton. It needs to be all the other school districts. So we did. And we came here and gave them. Hopefully they went out. So looking ahead, we have 925 gives. So our footprint's increasing. The 925 gives campaign is a one day of giving. It's going to be 925, so September 25th, 25. And on that day, we'll have 24-hour giving toward all of the nonprofits that are in our directory. And we have over a million households in the 925 area. So that, again, is that concept of everyone giving, not just the people who have the most means. We're also taking over the 25th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Fellowship Breakfast, because there was a community group that couldn't sustain it. And they were just going to stop it. So they stopped it last year and my phone rang off the hook all weekend. And I was a former superintendent, so I'm used to being on call. And I said, let's do this. So that's exciting. And we will be giving a youth philanthropy award at that. And then we started Next Gen Philanthropy, because what are the youth going to do? Are they going, it may look different. It may be different. They want to be more involved. They want to volunteer. They have more global awareness. Different causes might fit, you know, their, their frame. But we want to make sure that we are cultivating the next generation of generous folks. So this is the drum roll piece. We gave out our first, did they know? Did they know?
Oh, kept it a secret.
Oh my gosh, I'm not very good at secrets. So we gave out our first $3 million. We awarded, I don't say gave out. We awarded it through a competitive grant process. And then it went out. And it's, we're doing great work. And the county was so impressed. And there is more opioid settlement money. So they said, let's run another round. Can you extend your contracts and all that? And so we were, and so they're envisioning us going out and going through another process. But we had 41 incredible applications. And in the first round, we, the 3 million went to 12. And I said, actually, the next 10 were dynamite. Why put everyone through that again? Can we just fund them? And the Board of Supervisors last Monday said yes. So another 2.5 million is going out and Castro Valley is one of them. So about 180, I have wrote it down, my sticky, 181,230 dollars will go for Project Dash, drug abuse stops here in Castro Valley. So that's to your credit. Okay, so what, what might we, oh, we might do with you. So these are just some ideas. But we thought if we decided to set up a fund, if you have an existing foundation, we would not compete with that. It could look at different supplemental things. Our goal is to supplement, not supplant. In Dublin, we've done that. We did the Dublin Education Alliance and they had DEPI, which is the Dublin Partners in Education. We were their temporary stopgap until they received their own 501(c)(3). So we set up a portal. We set up fundraising. We can do as little or as much as you like, as much as you need. And it really depends. So it's called concierge and it's, you know, really, we, we just customize it. So for some, it's as minimal as just we take in the donations, we file the taxes, we give them their tax receipts, and then we write a check to the group. For others, we do their, we help them more with our fundraising, maybe their events. We have special donor events in your backyard, not my backyard, because it's dogs and things, but in some fancy backyard. And we bring, we bring in donors who want to be, you know, really have that intimate conversation with the needs. We can do a lot of social media. We have the newsletters. We have the podcasts. We can get the word out. And we can also help you with your own marketing plan, or if you have students to engage with. So really, our, we follow your lead. You would pick a field of interest. As I envision it with a school district, you wouldn't want a board member to be on the actual advisory of it. But you would, and the reason for that is because then it becomes a behested account if you're an elected official. And if people were to give to a fund that you were steering them toward, and then later they had a contract with the school district, then you would have to recuse yourself. So it could be a perceived conflict or an actual conflict, either way. So what, so our suggestion would be that you would certainly have input into what is needed in the district and what were the priorities for and all those things, but that you would designate probably a staff member and a community member to be the primary advisors. And those folks would be the conduit to work with us. Some people don't even do that. They just say to the Three Valleys, you make those decisions. But do it along these lines, like the county. So we, we ran an evaluation of the process and the county hands up to us. So again, we're, we're able to do as much or as little as you would need. But at the minimum, we take the administrative burden of the finance and the handling of that up your plate. And then we invest also. So it's a pooled investment, which makes it incredible. We had a couple, you know, strange months, the last couple of months. And so, but I would say the last two years, the funds have just grown so much. And so people's capacity has really grown as well, which means the impact grows. So that's, I just want to show this thank you. We get so many thank yous. We get all these formal official thank yous. But this one came from kids, so I liked it. So I read it. And that's all I have. I think I went longer. I'm sorry. I started getting into it. And I was just nice to have some peace.
Any questions?
So yeah, basically, the, the last piece you said, if the, if you decide that you want a foundation through tri-valley, then they would help us with certain things. And you, we would need either a staff member or even a previous board member, you know, a couple of people to be on the advisory.
And you could still, you could still have another advisory. Those would just be the primary advisors. Those are the people who sign the standard agreement. And you can have other people who are affiliated advisors, but that you always need to designate, and then you need a succession plan. So if something happens, what happens to the fund?
Okay, Gary? Trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Howard?
Yeah, we, Lavender and I met with, and Suzie and Parveen and I, we all met with you a few months ago, actually. And I was actually very impressed by the operation that you have. I think it's, you know, the good thing for us is it's essentially a turnkey operation. There are some details to sort of figure out. But I, you know, I was a little dubious, I confess, when I first went out there. I was wondering. Wondering whether we should just do our own. But I think the advantages are really too, too great to pass up and so forth. So I look forward to continuing discussion about this. Are you moving though? You were in Pleasanton when we visited.
Pleasanton, so John Sensabaugh is my board chair and he moved his office from Inglewood to San Ramon Bishop Branch.
Yeah, I got a note from him saying he's moved.
And Bishop Branch, Alex Miron is also on our board. So he owns all of the Bishop Branch development. So he, we actually have a satellite office there now. And then our board treasurer, who runs Leisure Sports in Pleasanton, he has given, I'm not unhoused. I have a Pleasanton base there because we work in Alameda County. We need to have an office both. And then we have a P O box for.
So you're in the same building?
It's not the same building, but it's now our treasurer's building, but it's, it's actually closer to the downtown. So not as fancy.
Thanks for waiting patiently.
Oh, no, that was fine. But I, I will say that if you decide you want to go on your own, we also can help you apply for your status as a nonprofit, a separate entity. If you decide that you want us to be a fiscal sponsor, because that can take anywhere from six months to two years to get, even if you go through the process, we could do that in between. And then, or we could just be your, we could just keep you as a fund with us.
Just Steve Aiman.
Thank you for a really thorough presentation. I appreciate it. I wanted just to ask just like a theoretical question because like looking at the breakdown of the kind of grants that you funded and the, I'm sorry, it's, it's past my bedtime right now. So I'm the, the, I think you said an interest based group.
Field of interest.
Yeah, a field of interest grant. The, the number in that, in that triangle was only the, I apologize. I am, it's been a long day. It looked like, it looked like you guys had done grants totaling 37,000 in that field of interest category. That was just this year. That was one of my questions.
That was a fiscal year, 2024. Our fiscal year ends March 31st. The year before, when I first came on, we were only doing those because we hadn't done something as large as the big grant making.
Okay, so theoretically, if we were to come to you and say, hey, we'd love to partner. We have this like big idea of like building a couple of new buildings. Like, is that like a realistic kind of funding goal through your organization?
It can be, yes. And so a capital expense, what, there's a couple of reasons why that's a good thing. Is it, it usually has a defined amount and it's something that is very visible when it's done.
Right.
Sometimes it's the morphous things that people have challenges giving.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's all.
Trustee Kuziak.
I think two questions and quick comments. One, trustee Howard wants us to stay until midnight, right? You want us here till midnight, right? Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm just curious to know, do you provide, it's, you talk about the matchmaking and it seems like as a professional fundraiser, what you could probably do for us, if there are people in our community who, let's say, won the Silicon Valley lottery, right? You could build that relationship with them to like, say, hey, listen, I know this great project that Castor Valley Unified is working on. Would you want to direct some of your wealth in that direction? So you probably can do that more effectively than we can. We come in and.
Partnership. And so usually what happens is I don't cold call, but I actually do know of one particular, I actually have a relationship.
Yeah.
You know, cordial, friendly, professional relationship with someone who is located in Castor Valley, who has asked us repeatedly why we aren't doing something here, because that's where the funds would probably go.
Great. And then what would the initial deposit be? Like, how much do you need?
It's $5,000 to open.
So we would just need to, this district would need to say, here's 5,000 bucks.
Actually, it would probably be better if it came from a donor outside of the school district.
Donor on our behalf could do it. Fantastic. I think the last meeting, we basically said direction like, hey, we want to do this. So I, it seems like our, we're affirming that. So I suppose the question of the staff would be like, okay, what do we do? What's our, what are our next steps?
So, so you get, if you give us direction to do that, I will work with Suzie and I would actually would work with Kelly and then come back to you with any next steps.
Right. This is a presentation, not an action item, right?
But we can provide direction.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay, trustee Howard.
Yeah, I think though that we need to be realistic about this fund. I mean, the idea here, the original idea of this was to build our own or either through our own work or through an outside entity, build our own fund. And through primarily, probably through bequests. So this is the kind of thing that doesn't build. I mean, we certainly get some donations, but you know, the, the, there are a number of organizations in Castro Valley who are trying to raise money for endowments, so to speak. And, and I actually think the number of people in Castro Valley whose net worth is, say, five to 30 or 35 million dollars is very big, surprisingly big. You wouldn't believe the money that's in this town. So it would be not, right now, we don't have a mechanism to collect any of that. If, if someone, an alumni or someone were willing to give us money, we need a mechanism to do that. We need to get it started and there's probably, there's an entry fee here, I suspect. But then beyond that, whether we do it by ourselves or through Three Valleys or through anybody, we would have to develop our own marketing materials to let people know that we exist and that there's a possibility if they thought this is a good idea. I mean, we also have a large number of trust attorneys in this town. So I think that just, we do need to be, this is not going to, I don't, by going with Three Valleys, we may find some rich donor over in somewhere in the county who's willing, you know, and who has made aware of us and thinks that we have a great project and they may be willing to give us money. But I think we need to remember that a lot of this is going to be built out of Castro Valley money.
Well, trustee Howard, as our, as our most senior entrusted trustee, like I, I defer to you because like you've really talked this up and I've, I've, I've been following along and I want us to be supportive of this. So when you think about the vision for it, I think that's where I maybe we as a board with partnership with staff need to maybe talk about that because I've heard, what if we have a fund to build buildings? Maybe it could supplement programs, but I, I would, did you, did you imagine it as sort of like a revenue stream to supplement our, our, our state fundings? Were you imagining programmatic needs, infrastructure needs? I think like getting a vision of that, like so we could see it and like respond to it, that would be great. That's what I'm getting to.
I, I don't think it's going to be much of a revenue stream. I think it's a special project. You know, if we suddenly want to build some new, great new thing and, and we've, we don't really have the bond money or the bond money focused in some other area, this would be, in my mind, would be like special projects. And I don't think it's, you know, this is putting us on a path to get somewhere, I hope.
Yeah, maybe Dr. Bowers can talk about the support, like with, when, when you were talking about, we have to do our own marketing and all of that stuff.
So, so at the bare minimum, it's a $5,000. And then if you, if we only do, I mean, if we only basically process the money, use our 501(c)(3), give you that umbrella and do our minimal marketing, which would be that you're on our website and all that, it's, it's a 1%, 1% of the donation that comes in. And then as, but we're also investing the money, which will grow. So often that is offset. What we, we have some that we charge as much as 8%, which is still not a lot if you compare to like Schwab and, and Fidelity and those. But that's because we are doing everything for them, you know, we, but we can do things like design your, we usually try to design the logo with you. We use our designers with your ideas, but you may have, you know, you might have a kid contest for your logo, you know, things like that. Yeah, so, so we can do as much or little, you know, really, we don't want to overtake, but we also don't want to burden you. So that comes from it. But usually the fund would be about 4%. And so, you know, for every hundred dollars is $4.
I, I, I say, let Suzie and I can meet with you a little bit just to sit together and put some of this information together to bring to maybe the facility and budget committee or whatever, and then go from there. Because there are different ways of doing it. What I had understood and imagined was exactly what you were describing. We're talking about like, okay, it's not about getting $5,000 and giving it out as scholarship. It's about like, hey, we're talking, we're hoping, you know, for.
Maybe we need to make an investment in audio equipment in all of our classrooms.
Or, or a building or something like that.
So Sunol is a good example.
Track for the band.
Sunol is a community that is, they're unincorporated. So they don't have their, you know, city that will help them. And so they decided they want to do something called Sunol Strong. They don't even know exactly what it's for, but it's for beautification and to keep. And so the, so we kind of scoured around and we ended up connecting with a local company that loves Sunol and had had some quarry work done or something. And so they started us off with 600,000, but they're not spending it yet. So what they said is 500,000 is invested, 100,000 is there in case there's something that surfaces. And sure enough, porta potties downtown so that people can enjoy the parades or something is surfacing. And so they have a process for that. So that's a good example, I think of.
They use their money for porta potties.
Take away, come on.
So, so.
But that was the immediate need, but then there's also the long term.
Later, yeah. So let.
He's going to get in trouble. Yeah. The teachers are getting, you know.
Yeah. The logo needs to have a chicken in it, back to the.
So I think we can, if we can meet before our board workshop on the facility and bond, I think that would be great. So, but thank you.
So much time. I know it's a long night for you.
No, thank you so much. You know, just so you know, Kelly, we've never gone this late. All 10 years I've been here, we end at like 7:30.
Okay, and just so you know, this is like deja vu for me. We were, you know, we had the one and, actually Fremont though took the cake.
Yeah, 2 o'clock in the morning. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. So, so, so I, here's a question I have for us. The, the budget news is just what we got May revise. It's not an approval. It's not the ZB, none of that. So I would say if we can not maybe do that and just have the presentation, because Ms. Kelly has, Kim Kelly has been sitting here since 7 o'clock. If we could do that quickly, because if it's past 10:30, we have to vote to extend the meeting. 11, okay. But we don't want to be here till 11.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Let's do that. Motion to amend the agenda.
I get a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we amend the agenda by taking 12D and tabling it over to our next meeting.
I second that.
Okay. What?
We can't because the next meeting, we, you're, we're actually taking the budget and LCAP to you for public hearing. So May revise, I can send you the PowerPoint.
That'd be perfect. Let's do that.
But we're just amending it to say we're not doing that agenda item, but we're gonna.
Precisely. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
Second that, okay. A school board member say? Uh, trustee Kuziak, trustee Whitaker.
Yes.
Trustee Howard.
I have a question.
Oh, oh, I thought you were raising, saying yes. Go ahead, please.
This is on a presentation item. There's no vote listed on the agenda.
We're amending the agenda.
Sleep or something. Yes.
Okay, yes, okay. Uh, trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Okay. And I also vote yes, so we have amended the agenda to skip 12D and get an email on this information from Suzie Chan. Okay. 12C? Okay, 12C, we're going on to diversifying team members at Castor Valley Unified.
Thank you for that. I just also want to add for TV tip, they do have a 800 CV TV tip hotline for, one of the roles, they forgot to mention that they're actually midnight therapists with their teachers. They really help them out. And I want to apologize to Kim Kelly for being so late.
Thank you, Fatima.
Fatima, bye. Welcome, Scarlett.
All right, see you at graduation.
I think we're both out of practice for late board meetings from our previous life. So we'll just go ahead and start with. So we start with a recruitment of trying to diversify our employees in our plan with just getting everybody on board and also TV tip with this. And we really focused on trying to diverse and we have some data for you, just like Joanna has data. We got data too. The journey of our class of 24, 25, we attended several job fairs. One of the most notable areas was going to the Philippines for grabbing some of our special ed teachers and also interviewing over 80 certificated and 70 classified candidates, as well as testing 70 classified tests as well. Here's the data. So if you look from 21, 22, I believe that was my first year to where we are in 24, 25, you can see the increase in our population, different ethnicities, and really trying to focus on retaining and growing various aspects of that. Last year, we really broke it down to really, even the data was even more specific, but we thought we'd just clump it together and just show the growth that we've been doing year after year. So we've been doing a great job with our staff and also helping them to support them with TV tip. Part of this program is our grant funding that we've had with our classified grant. That's the initial part where some of our paraeducators have taken advantage of that and providing them grants to attend college while working with, here in the district. Then we also applied for a capacity grant to start the planning of our teacher residency program, which is now up and running thanks to Kim Kelly, our coordinator, and also Megan Setcliff. And that has been really great. They just allowed us to expand the timeline to 2031. And we have about 56 left to award with the grant program. So we're doing really well. We're really in great shape with that. And I'm going to hand it over with Kim to start talking about the teacher residency program.
Thank you very much. And I have to say, what a great night. I mean, it was bumpy to start out, but I'm a Fremont person, so it was, it was nothing. But what, what a terrific night to hear, you know, all the support that TV tip provides, all the support that is provided, financial support to the community. It's just really exciting to be part of all of that. And it just gives me goosebumps. So the teacher residency program actually gives me goosebumps too. The, the teacher residency program is a program that we run in conjunction with Cal State East Bay. It's basically an expanded opportunity for people to do their student teaching. Traditional student teaching, you're placed maybe with a teacher for a few weeks, not a few, maybe six or eight weeks, and then somebody else six or eight weeks later. In our program, our residents are placed with one mentor and they're with that mentor literally from before school starts till after school ends. It's a full year program and the idea is when they walk out of here, they will know everything that it takes to be really successful in their own first year. Couple that, of course, with our amazing TV tip team and we just feel like it's, it gives people a really good three year start. We, one of the other differences between our student teaching program, our residency program and like East Bay's traditional program, we do pay our residents a stipend. This year, we paid $33,750 to each resident. Next year, that will be the same. We also pay our mentor teachers, our cooperating teachers, a stipend of $4,000. The stipend for the residents acknowledges the fact that there are some people who would be wonderful teachers for whom a year of working, paying to go to school and earning no money makes teaching a career that they would never consider. $33,000 doesn't go very far in the Bay Area, but it's, it's something, right? So the focus of our grant is really on, as Dr. Zamora said, diversifying our, our teaching pool, finding teachers, STEM teachers, so science, technology, engineering and math, and then also finding really highly qualified and willing to stay special education folks. In, we, we ran, this was our second year of the program. The first year we ran it, we had 13 applicants. We, we brought in eight residents and of those, five are teaching in Castro Valley. So that's good. This year, we had 30 applicants, so more than double their applicants. We had 15 residents. We have, and one of those residents actually came through the classified grant program as well. So she was a paraeducator in the district and will now be a credential teacher. And I think she's one of the ones that has a job for next year, right? Yeah. And so six of the, six of the, well, the 13 that are left residents have already been hired by Castro Valley. So the residency program is providing a great opportunity for. So the residency program is providing a great opportunity for us to add really highly qualified teachers. We're in the process of accepting applications for next year. So far, we've got 21, I think, 21 applications. We've got, I know this slide says 42 mentors, but I looked at the mentor database the other day. We've got 77 teachers in Castro Valley that have raised their hand and said, I'd be willing to be a mentor teacher, be a host teacher. That's just incredible. So we are, we're growing the program and we're excited about it. As Dr. Zamora said, we've got quite a few grants we can give out, but we've got a long runway now through 20, through 2031. We're looking for maybe 12 or 15, no more than that in any given year. I just cannot enough thank the TV tip team, who is an essential piece of the success of the residency program. Megan is my, oh my goodness. Siamese twin might be a little much, but she, she is my, my inside voice, my inside resource. She is my thinking partner. She does everything. And the, and that entire TV tip team, no matter what we ask of them. Help us find a mentor who, will you come and do professional development for us? Do you know anything about this teacher? How can you help us? Every time we ask, this team doesn't even hesitate. They jump in and support the residency program, and I truly could not do it without you. And yay for TV tip! The, really the components of the teacher residency, we've got a really strong learning relationship between the mentor and the teacher resident. They're together all year long. We do a lot of coaching on how do you give feedback? How do you do observations? How do you help move these people, move the student teachers forward to become excellent teachers? So that learning relationship is key. We do regular professional development. In fact, tomorrow morning at 8:30, we'll be back. We're working with our mentors in the morning, we're working with our residents in the afternoon, and thanks. For the mentors, we do two full days of PD in the summer to bring the cohort together and also just to establish some of the practices we want them to follow as mentors. We meet five times during the year, just to continue to, to build on their professional knowledge. This year, we worked our way through a book called The Coaching Habit. And, and then we also go in one-on-one and meet with our mentors. How's it going? What can we do? How can we help you? We, we schedule that, but then we're also available on demand, of course, if there are issues that come up. We also do professional development with our residents. They get one day of PD in the summer, and then we meet with them six times during the year. In addition to that, the TV tip and, and myself, we go into the student teachers' classrooms. We watch them teach, we sit down with them afterwards, we debrief with them, and we, that really supplements what the university provides. The university does provide a university supervisor who comes once in a while. Sometimes online, sometimes in person. But we, we supplement that with our own observations and debriefs. And then we do work closely with the Cal State East Bay staff, but I think our people get a little bit more. This is just a list of some of the topics, the professional development topics that we go over with our mentors. A lot of them, you can see are things that, that provide that foundation I mentioned, building trust. How do adults learn? How do you establish expectations? How do you co-teach with somebody? How do you, how do you model teaching? And I won't read you the whole list, but we do, every time we're going to meet with them, we give a lot of thought to what content they need. We talk to them a lot, we survey them after each PD and say, what would you like next? And we customize the PD the next time based on the feedback that we get.
What is CSTP?
California.
Teaching profession.
Did you hear that? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. A couple challenges we're facing, ongoing funding, not the funding for the stipends. That is, that's solid through 2031. The funding to cover the operating expenses is a shorter grant, and so we're getting close to the end of that. So that's a challenge that we're having to, to consider. And then our other challenge is just how do we find the very best candidates? Because they first have to be accepted into Cal State East Bay, our pool is limited to Cal State East Bay, and our, our communication conduit is through East Bay as well. So we do have a really good relationship with them. Of course, current residents talk to next year's residents, and so that word of mouth becomes a, a good way to find people. But that's also one of our challenges. How do we just find those absolute top-notch candidates? Want to wrap it up?
So one of the two areas I'd just like to mention that is helping the teacher residents that do not get hired here. We, we are being responsible for creating excellent student teachers or teacher residents to go into the teaching field. So I tell them, put Castro Valley Teacher Residency on your resume, because that means something. We are really developing leaders that are really strong in the teaching field. So that's one thing that's, the other part, our own mentors are refining their own skills to become even better teachers through this program. So it's a twofold, me, even a threefold, because of the ones that we hire also. But our own teacher mentors are refining their own teaching skills, day in and day out. So that's another plus that this program has. So thank you again to Kim, to taking this on and to our TV tip team. It's really been beneficial for Castro Valley.
Yeah, and of course, thank you to Dr. Zamora, who had the, had the vision for this program and applied for the initial grants and put the team together and continues to be a tremendous support for us. We couldn't do this without Dr. Zamora, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's important for us to know that at first, the reason we have $33,000 is because when you applied and you were on it, there were lots of districts that didn't. So there was extra money for the state to actually double what we were getting. So thank you so much for all this work. You know, I'm looking at Kim Kelly and the four of you. And when we talk about like excellent teachers, and I say that because Kim was one of my teachers when I was a principal. And then, of course, she was an excellent principal and director and onward, but it's just amazing. When you said you love the word induction, I completely agree, because it used to be called beginning teacher support and assessment, which we used to do. This is so much more and just amazing. So thank you to all of you for being in, and thank you, Dr. Zamora, for having the vision to do this.
Thank you. Trustee Kuziak, you had.
Very quick comments and compliments. It just seems like if we're talking about the previous agenda item about a community foundation, it just seems like if we want, it seems like a residency program might be something we, we might want to look at as, as, as a thing for that. It seems like the future is these residency programs. If I read the literature correctly, I think there's a big thing at UC Riverside this past week or so with the city of San Bernardino, I don't know, something down south. But I, it just seems like that's the future, and it's, it's, it's just a travesty, of course, that student teachers aren't paid anything. We've put so much on teachers. So if we can solve that as a district, it seems like we'd create a pipeline of excellence. And speaking of excellence, I just want to make a shout out to Dr. Zamora. You, you have come up multiple times tonight in terms of the excellence you support in our district. If you've ever just sat with him one-on-one. Those numbers, the data you share with me mean so much, because when we, when I started on the board, we talked about this. Like, how do we create, how do we create a Castro Valley Unified School District workforce that looks like our students and shares their experiences? You got the data, dude. You got it. And it's aligned with that, and that makes me really happy. And I just, that's something I hope you put in your performance review, but I, I just, that's a real accomplishment. And I think that's something that this community has needed. And we, as a, as a school district, you have been the catalyst for that. So I just, I just want to just thank, thank you for that and what you do for TV tip, what you do for the residency, and what you do for diversifying our school, our schools. Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any other comments. We are going to go to 12E, approved personnel report.
Can I make a motion that we approve the personnel report?
I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Howard? It is on the personnel report.
Approving the personnel.
Approving the personnel report.
Be booting the governor.
Yeah, we did that before.
Got the email already.
Okay, yes. And trustee Raymond? I also vote yes, so that's 5-0. We've approved the personnel report. Next item is adopt resolution 70-2425, local assignments options.
Move that we approve it.
I second.
Okay. Trustee Kuziak?
Yep.
Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
And trustee Howard?
Yes.
And trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That's 5-0. We've approved the resolution 70-2425. We are now at board comments?
I will be very brief. I'll be, because I've done some, and you all don't have to leave, we're about to finish up.
Okay.
I just want to acknowledge the work we did as a board, and it was just re, really affirming. And as colleagues, I hope you hear that it just felt really good to work with you and to come to consensus and to, to work together through the, the entire process. So I want to thank you for that. I had the opportunity to wander into the Powder Puff Football Game last week, and that was just so much fun to see. And I just, it's wonderful to see an athletic event like that so close to the end of the school year and had a great time seeing a lot of my former Cub Scouts there and my son's friends wondering where he was. But it was just great to be there. We did have our SMAC Selpa meeting. We, we approved our local plan. I, I do, I do want to acknowledge that towards the end of it, there was, there's some tension on, on that board in terms of figuring out what the purpose of the board is, where we're going with the board. I'm happy that it kind of came out, but I think there's work for the board members there to maybe sit down and work with staff for a pathway forward and how we can be more effective and, and use our time there and value our time there. I feel like I've done other things and I'm totally forgetting what I did. I feel like I did something today, but I'm forgetting, but I just, you know. Oh, I went on to San Francisco to join with our colleagues from CBTA and the California Teachers Association in the March for Education to push back on the fascism of the Trump administration, and we should fight it every day. That's it. Thanks.
Trustee Whitaker?
I also want to echo trustee Kuziak and thank the board for our continued collaboration throughout this whole process. And with Amy, I, you know, I really appreciated how well we collaborated together, how well we worked together. And then I also attended the Budget and Facilities Committee recently with Mr. Howard, Parvina Mahdi and Susie Chan, and we had a great conversation, and I'm looking forward to our continued conversation on the 7th.
The president, sorry, Dolly, I'm sorry, I just forgot to mention I will be not in the state of California from June the 3rd to June 23rd. I've, I think I notified you, I thought I did. But I will provide my comments with regards to the budget document while I'm out of town.
Right.
Yeah, I'll be here for the second one. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, trustee Howard?
I only have about a half an hour's worth here.
Bro, you're the one who wants to be here till midnight.
You can only have like 17 minutes.
Do it filibuster off.
Already passed through the sleepy part, I mean. Okay, I was at the Budget and Facilities Committee with Ms. Whitaker as she, as she was being formal. And a couple of other sort of things that I like, actually. We are doing the Keep Rising Up Awards again this year, our third year. We're giving four awards at Redwood and four at the adult school. And this year, we're expanding to the five graduates of Roy Johnson. Okay, and the last thing that I'll mention, are we at 30 minutes yet? Sacramento State has, in their school nursing program, in their, this is for school nurses. It's not just the school of nursing. They produce school nurses. One of the requirements is that they have to face a mock school board with a presentation so they can practice having to deal with people like us. And so I participated in several of those Saturday or two ago. Anyway, that's all I have. Thanks very much.
What was your character like? Were you cranky? Was your school bear char, I want to just know what your character was like as a mom. Yeah, I will.
Okay, all right.
They're nervous as anything.
Yeah.
You can't believe it. It's really funny. They're really nervous. I told them, you love school nurses.
Yes.
School nurses have diplomatic immunity to many places. And they should not, never fear of it.
Board, yeah. Trustee Raymond?
I can't even remember anything I've done this week or the last week. I will say again, yeah, very happy to have you.
Okay.
That's all I got for tonight, because I'm not kidding when I just say it's past my bedtime.
Well, I'm totally wide awake, because it's my time. I'm being a night person. I don't find this hard at all. Actually, maybe earlier at 5:00 is difficult for me. I have, let's see, we all went to the special board meeting on the 12th. That was the whole day. We worked together, collaborated. It was really very nice. I'm so glad we found the best candidate. I'm so glad to have you on board and all of that good stuff. I was, you already saw the pictures of me at the Employee of the Year Celebration at Castro Valley High in the cafeteria. I didn't know I was going to do pictures. I just was going to be in the audience, but that was fine. And then, of course, this past weekend, I left Friday night for Sacramento for the California School Board's Delegate Assembly. I had to, as a new delegate, be there at 7:30 a.m., so I went Friday. And then I learned about many of the bills in California related to education and about how, I'm going to mispronounce his name, but the Chair of the Education Department, Al Marasucci, is running for Superintendent of Schools. And I applied to be on the Legislative Committee, so we'll see what happens, hopefully. I, I think that is the way you actually really get involved in the Delegate Assembly, is you have to join a committee. Otherwise, you're just kind of sitting there and they're feeding you info. So you have to be on a committee to make some kind of difference. Yeah. And was there anything else? No. Oh, Thursday, you kind of alluded to this a little bit, but Thursday is Senior Awards tomorrow night, where the scholarships that go through Castro Valley Ed Foundation will be awarded, and I'll be at that tomorrow night. Okay, and that's it. I think we're ready to adjourn.